I would like to call to order our Monday, January eighth, two thousand twenty four. Regular meeting of the community union school district three zero three school board. Uh Ms. Mars, please take the role at this six o'clock P M.
Yes, Miss Bell?
Here.
Mister Kuchar?
Here.
Mister Lander?
Here.
Mister Lentz?
Here.
Mrs. Pinky?
Here.
Mister McAlley?
Here.
Mrs. Gerrie?
Here. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you for joining us evening. We do have some citizen comments. So Mister Blackner, would you please read the introduction?
During the public time period, members of the public body who wish to speak are asked to first state their name and community which they reside. Each individual will have up to three minutes to address the board on a topic that they're choosing. We ask all individuals who address with the name to do so with respect and civility toward others. Please note that personal matters are sensitive and confidential. We also want to inform our speakers that all regular special committee meetings are live streaming and available for viewing at any time with district hearing to the chairman. Personal information should be considered before making a statement that will be reported and made above. While the board will not respond in case while the time during the speech here, this committee. District on behalf of our staff.
Thank you, Mister Lander. I would like to ask Ms. Brittany Walker to come forward, please.
Brittany Walker, this is my husband, Shavon Walker. We both reside in St. Charles. Um we're both educators at the high school level and parents of three oh three for the last seven years. My oldest child, our oldest child started in first grade and are and he's currently in seventh grade, um and our youngest is in third grade. So the new school hours affects two levels and in one year's time it will actually affect um the third level of the high school. Um I understand that there's a lot that goes on in the meetings to make these decisions on behalf of the community as elected officials. Um but really just wanted to understand and have a better understanding of how this will affect our future. Um especially looking at our elementary age daughter who will now get to sleep then, uh but that does not help those of us who in our households have to go to work today. Um realistically, having nine A M. start time for a nine, ten year old is going to make it very challenging for our family. Uh it's going to be fine for my middle schooler who will probably puff and puff about waking up an extra half hour early to go to middle school. Um but we really just want to make sure that childcare, bus service, uh parents who work both in the household um are all considered when you're making your decisions moving forward. Just a few years ago, we made the adjustment of having the additional thirty minutes of the elementary day and that was an adjustment for us, but it may, I will say, it didn't work in our favor. Um but this new time change is one to throw, I think, a lot of parents, not one. We might hear that from other parents. That's one to definitely throw us for a loop.
My name is uh Shavon Walker. I would also know that we are in a good situation because we do have an extended family for our mother-in-law besides with us. So being able to have that adult, a secret child go to and from school is a great benefit to us. But even with the time being pushed back, um the cousins for her ability to work is now that resource that we once had is no longer there, which may mean family like ours and other families with that which reside in St. Charles would all would have to pay for childcare just to send their child to school. And typically, we look historically at when elementary age school uh children start school. I'm not sure that a nine o'clock school day is typical throughout the nation. I just want to have additional informations, decisions based on the rate in which our students will be able to learn for extended school day or rather a school day that will start later. I would imagine that they will have to be into a learning reason. While the research is going to show that by starting school later that our students are going to learn, right, at greater rates. That rate is not to understand it, um but it does put a great uh burden on families. Uh that will put a burden on our families and that we stand here today with hopes that the board would reconsider their decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next, I would like to simply ask Ms. Danielle Piment.
Hi, it's Danielle Piment. I'm a mother uh student in P three oh three, got graduated from P three oh three and I've been in the community for twenty two years. Um I wanted to just address a couple of things with the board and the administration. I did go back and watched this service meetings from Lance and Plunk and I was really um got impressed with the academic report that's given. I think that what you need the community, especially the parents, to understand academically where our challenges are um and where our schools are struggling at all levels. It needs to be more comprehensive, comprehensive for us to understand. It was very vague and parents are a key to helping the district, helping their students improve. We're not doing. Our five words, oh, the transition of boundaries, it's not about the academics, the weeky transition time. And that's enough. Our students are doing well. It's it's kind of embarrassing that we're nine out of ten grading. The comparable issues. This is Nate Charles. That tax pay is being eaten, it's under the taxes we expect more on. Um in terms of communicating, I know something went on today about the changes, so I'm glad that somebody spoke to that. Community boundary changes, school changes, now we're going to get schedule changes because of the time starts. So there's a lot of things going on, really communication, I urge you to get that piece. Um and there also needs to be balance, better balance in the boundary changes. There are terrible disparities between the high schools. And that's where our students are really failing coming out of this district. We need to do a much better job. You want to talk about equity and equality. It's not happening in the plans that have been given by this district, so we need to do better. And just looking at the elementary school, the um the ones that have the highest disparities in um financial disparities are doing bad. So how can we expect a high school that has the higher level of disparity in income do better without additional resources? Thank you.
Thank you for uh those comments. Next, I would like to ask to come forward uh E Evan Bowman.
Good evening. My name is Evan Bowman. I'm a junior at St. Charles North High School and I would like to speak regarding the boundary changes proposed for switching the Timbers neighborhood to uh St. Charles East instead of staying at North. I'm a North student. I am a North athlete. I attend North football games. I went to North incoming. It is part of my identity and it is part of the identity of my neighbors and my peers. We're a small group of students, some of them have joined me here tonight, and we represent much of what North has to offer. We are athletes, musicians, actors, peer leaders, National Honor Society members, and much more. Due to COVID, our middle school experience was inconsistent and difficult. North is the first consistent school experience we have had since elementary school. We have had many times to bond and make connections. Many of us have been able to find mentors and teachers and coaches at North, and we all feel comfortable and confident there. Move to East next year would be a very difficult change. As a senior, I would feel like a freshman all over again. All those senior year milestones would be watered down because I would be finding, still trying to find my footing. Graduating wouldn't feel as meaningful because the majority of my high school experience would have been spent somewhere else, and I believe this would be a feeling shared by the majority of my peers. We all have different commitments and attachments to North. To rebuild and start all over again somewhere else would be overwhelming and for some of us impossible. On a personal level, I want to stay at North and swim with my brother. He will be a freshman next year. Over the last three years, he has watched me compete at North's swim team. He has heard about the team bonding activities, the daily grind, and the insight into their programs and coaches. We've been excited to be at the same school for a while and the same team for a while. We haven't been in the school together since I was in the fifth grade. This one year left to share this part of our lives. Finally, I briefly want to address the boundary changes for Wild Rose. Wild Rose is hugely important to me. I love my time there. I had many friends in Wild Rose. We would sometimes ride our bikes to school. Wild Rose is really just an extension of the Timbers. The neighborhood is safely connected by paths that are very safe for kids because they avoid major roads. Except for the students that live in Wild Rose, the Timbers kids are the closest to the school, much closer than the students from the rest of the boundary. And I would like you to please consider keeping the high school boundaries the same or at the very least allowing current North students to finish their high school career there. My neighbors and myself would benefit and appreciate consistency of finishing where we started. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next, I would like to ask Ms. Bobby Rail. Forward, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, and good evening, uh Superintendent. Um I'm having trouble with the glare tonight, so I'll do my best with what I wanted to present. Um I went over the data again today and there's one principle that stuck in my mind. The future boundaries should provide better educational opportunities at each school to ensure an equitable student experience at each school. The bottom line in this boundary process is that you want to make sure as a as a board that you make the difficult decision to make sure that every precious child in this district has opportunity to grow. And you're not there yet. At the elementary school, you have four Title One schools that are always performing at the bottom of the list. Year after year after year after year. How are you going to correct that? It has to do with demographic imbalance. You have one school now at fifty eight percent. Fewest summer at low is seven and eight percent. Free reduced lunch. If you don't address the demographics in this district, you are not going to solve the problem. The same at the high school. My Johnny, my Mary, I don't want to move. I have the right to go to a certain high school because it performs better than the other high school. Are you going to sit there as a board and be intimidated by this? I hope not. Your middle schools are balanced. You need to carry that program forward. East can hold more students. If you want more students at East, fine, but you still need the demographic balance that doesn't exist. It goes beyond providing poor programming space because it happened the last time when we went to the second high school. Well, North is smaller. Let's just provide core programming space for North. Our subgroups, our special groups, they can all go east. If you continue with that mentality, you create this disparity in the district that comes to haunt because you have those four Title One schools that continue not to perform. We have a perception that North High School is better than East. It's a perception based on demographic imbalance. The public doesn't understand that. If you solve these problems, you aren't going to move juniors and seniors. You may not even get it done for next year. You'll start with freshmen and if you have the guts, when we went to a second high school, you'll move freshmen and sophomores together. You don't move upperclassmen. It's doable, but if you as a board sit there and say, oh, well, we're just going to be satisfied with providing core programming space, you haven't solved the problem that gets you to good. I'm not even sure we're at good, but you want to get to great. So make those tough decisions, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next, may I ask Ms. Gillian Walter to come forward?
Hello, my name is Gillian Walter and I reside here in St. Charles. I have two children that are at the elementary school age and I am really upset about these new hours. Not only did you change the beginning of the day, but you changed the afternoon, which is just seems to me outrageous. Many families, including myself, will now need to pay for before and after school care. You indicated that there will be a fee for service before and after care. I'm not sure how that's going to work out because Baker Station right now is at capacity. We lost Salvation Army. When they shut down, parents freaked out. There was nowhere to go. Baker Station is at cap. I pick my kids up every day. It's a madhouse in there. Where are we going to house all of these children? I currently pay two hundred and seventy one dollars per child for after school care. So now that I need to pay for before school care, is that price going to be doubled? Am I going to be spending a thousand dollars for my children to attend school every month? I might as well not even work, to be honest. It's absolutely ridiculous. I appreciate all of these meetings that have been held for the boundaries, the community feedback. You guys have been very open about your plans and you want the feedback. There was no no feedback requested from the community. I understand plans had to be made with transportation. Times were put on the table. You guys had to make deals. I understand that it's a lot to coordinate. But why didn't you tap into the community that it's actually affecting? I'm also kind of upset about the fact that all of our after school our appointments, our occupational therapy, all of our children, our neuro. Sorry, I'm just really upset. Occupational therapies, there's a waitlist, this whole area, the whole Tri-Cities area. That evening time is a coveted time. You're going to cut off parents from being able to access therapies for their children and it's just not okay. It's just very, very upsetting that you seem to be transparent about the boundary issues, yet you just slide in this this change of time. You email us two hours before the board meeting. There's really like nobody here. I pulled up and I was shocked. I don't think you gave ample amount of time for people to actually look, review, digest, critically assess this information. I just find it to be irresponsible and I just don't know how people are going to afford to pay for before and after school care. And this fee for service, I'm just curious how this will work out in terms of a capacity. Baker Station, I sign up for five days, three days, I'm locked in. How's that going to work for the fee for service? Where's that cap going to be? So if I need to drop my kid off that day, but they're at cap, where's my kid going to go? I just really hope that you guys really take into consideration how this is going to affect people in this economic crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask Ms. Jamie Simons to come forward?
Hi, my name is Jamie Simons and I'm a resident of St. Charles. Um I have three children, two will be middle school next year and one will be elementary, so the hours greatly affect our family. Um I know a lot of the other people have already spoke, brought up all the things I've been thinking. Um and I think one of the main thing is I don't have anything prepared because by the time I saw the email, I had to come right over to the meeting. So I really am disappointed in the way the hours were sent out. Um not giving people time to even come here. I've had quite a few friends text me. Um they weren't able to make it tonight. Um I know a lot of people, these new hours are not working for them. In the past, I know older children have gotten younger children off to their buses and this can no longer happen. So those families, as Gillian said, are going to now have extra costs in order just to send their children to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that concludes our citizen comments at this time. Uh now I'll turn it to Dr. Gordon for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Beargreve, and I will be addressing the uh starting in times a little bit later in the discussion portion of the agenda as well. Um as most, if not everybody knows, um it appears there's weather coming. Uh we have inclement weather information and procedures can be found on our district website under the parent community tab. Uh the district will make an announcement before five or five A M. or before if there is a cancellation in in schools. Um but if you do not receive a notification, we are operating as normal. Our buildings and grounds crew will be arriving very early in the morning uh tomorrow to plow the sidewalks, to plow the parking lots, and our transportation team will be arriving earlier than normal to get a head start on the weather condition. So we're very aware of it, be meeting with, having conversations with other superintendents bright and early tomorrow morning. Already had that first conversation tonight. Uh but we will make sure that we have that information out to our families uh the moment i- if there's a decision to cancel school. Um boundary webinar, so making sure everybody's aware that this Thursday, January eleventh at six P M., uh there's a link to this webinar uh that it was shared in or across the board. It'll be on all of our district uh school sites, the the district website, so you can access that link. Um it will also be shared. Uh we'll also have the survey shared with every district family through our email Thursday evening as well. So this will be an opportunity for R S P. I'll do a quick introduction, hand it over to Rob from R S P. They will go through the the different concepts, the concepts that the board requested that they review. So he he will do concept, the the current concepts that we're seeing, concept one, concept two, elementary, uh middle school, high school, and then the additional modifications that the board requested at last at the last business services meeting. And then on January sixteenth, R S P. Rob will be here in person to work with the board on the the boundary scenarios. Um again, reviewing all of the information from the survey, making sure the board has uh all the information that they need. And then on January twenty ninth, the board will be working to finalize the concepts that would go forward to the February twelfth board meeting. So we have a number, we have a number of board meetings coming up or committee meetings all designated to to really have these conversations around the boundaries. Uh that is it, and then I'll join you again here in a bit.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just two clarifying questions. Did you say the notification for weather tomorrow is five A M.?
I apologize. I thought I said that. It we we'll have it at the latest at six A M. in the morning. Thank you.
Okay. And and then could you um explain just a little bit more about the survey following the webinar?
Yeah, so roughly right around six thirty. Um it it's going to mimic the first series when Rob was in person, in person, kind of walked through the different scenarios. And then right around that six thirty timeline, we'll release the survey out for people. Uh again, it'll be on our websites. It it'll be, it's already in the across the board and other areas for uh families, students, staff, to be able to engage in that survey.
And it's a short turnaround?
It's a very short turnaround. So uh this will be on Thursday. We'll have results back for the board at that next Tuesday, the sixteenth board meeting. So this one is a much quicker turnaround. Great questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um now moving to uh committee reports, uh should we start with learning and teaching?
You can start with learning and teaching because it was a very short meeting. Um due to the board's um schedule that night, we convened uh just for citizen comments. And then um we uh called the meeting to an end, um so the board could go back to its um closed session. Uh the presentation we were going to have on um increasing student achievement of multilingual and Hispanic students is being presented tonight, which was what we would have seen at L and T. So um you'll have time tonight to um interact and see the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Uh how about uh business services?
We do, uh we had a business services meeting that was a little bit longer than learning and teaching on the twenty first of December. During that, we opened with a discussion with a presentation from the St. Charles Education Foundation about the good work that they do to raise money and distribute grants uh to teachers and students within the district for academic and other programs. We had financial reports uh from Mid Valley and from D three oh three. There was a discussion around the bond parameters resolution, which is on the agenda tonight for action. We had an open discussion around the boundary survey results that builds on what uh Dr. Gordon talked about here that is led to some of the further discussions for later this week and next week. We had several different construction updates um regarding uh roofing, the boiler replacement at Wild Rose and the construction at the Haynes um Early Childhood Center. That um Haynes construction update is on the agenda tonight for action for board approval. There was a second discussion around the abatement bid for uh the wing over here. And that is also on the agenda for today's meeting. There was a discussion about extending the life of um different roofs within the district and a uh discussion associated with uh a proposed cost for summer twenty twenty four roof services that's on the agenda for tonight as well on the consent agenda. There was a discussion of refreshing the fleet of radios that are used throughout the district for administrative and teacher communications. And that's on the consent agenda today. And then there was a discussion associated with the server chassis refresh, which is the uh the racks and the servers that support all of the I T networking for the district. And that is uh on the consent agenda for tonight. And the meeting was adjourned at six fifty one.
Thank you. Uh we did not have a policy committee meeting. Um so with that said, I think we have concluded all of our updates at this time. Uh let's go ahead and move on to uh the next item, which is our section four on the agenda for discussion. Uh first item is the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, so next school year, uh school building start and end times.
Thank you, Mrs. Beargreve. Um community members, families who came to speak on the starting in times, I absolutely hear you. Um I hear that it is a a significant change. Uh I absolutely hear that, understand that uh the changes impact um our families, impact them financially, impacts them uh for on the daycare side of things. I absolutely hear you. Um we did bring a number of individuals to the table to to really talk this thing through from teachers, teachers, parents, our administrators, cabinet members, uh transportation, um a lot of different individuals giving different insights into this. But let me take a step back. Um how did we get here? I think that's one of the most important things, you know, because as somebody had mentioned, just two short years ago, two and a half short years ago, uh the district moved towards a longer elementary school day. That longer elementary school day, including That longer elementary school day included the addition of elementary specials. Elementary specials are art, PE, music. What the district at the time made the decision to expand that day by having these offerings. Those offerings allowed for the day to go from six hours and 20 minutes to seven hours, which is what it currently is. Upon my arrival, one of the biggest issues the board brought to me was ensuring that the district continued to operate with a balanced budget. One of the pieces within our, one of our educational funds, which is our largest fund, was we were running over a $3 million deficit. And as we, as our team looked into it, it really can be tied back to the extension of the school day, the hiring of a significant number of our specials teachers. And the specials are absolutely amazing. This is nothing about our teachers or the students who were participating in those. You know, the art, music, and power. But what it did bring to the forefront was a significant financial hurdle that we could not overcome. Because again, that is ongoing dollars being spent over time. It wasn't like, okay, we, for one year, it's going to be $3 million. No, it's each and every year, and that number would continue to increase. So in collaboration with our teachers association, we brought this through the negotiation process. And we created the six hour and 20 minute school day. That's why we're, that's what really started the new starting in times was that, that decision. So by reducing the, by reducing the day, it brought us to this situation. But to develop the starting in times, at the end of the day, it really does become a math exercise. How, how, how do you make all of these things work? Here are the different factors that you have to put into, into consideration. The elementary is six hours and 20 minutes. Our high school, middle school are seven hours. Transportation needs a minimum of 30 minutes between each level to compete, to complete the routes and have the buses move on to that next level. With only 35 minutes, we have between high school routes, middle school routes, then our elementary route. So we, what we put out there was high school would go first, middle school and elementary. We had a lot of people who pushed back and said, you know, a number of years ago, we had elementary day that was six hours and 20 minutes. Why don't we just do what we did in the past? You know, unfortunately, it didn't work then either. But behind the scenes, how that worked where our middle school students were literally being held outside for 20 to 25 minutes. We had administrators and teachers waiting for them. We have teachers who are in this audience who are part of that. So that didn't work then because again, it's always the math problem on this issue. How do we get our kids in our buses, home on time, and then back again to get the next group of students to be home? We also really thought about, you know, so for us, when you think about those time constraints, elementary has to either be first or last. So if you put them first at that 7:15 start time, that means we have five to 10-year-olds outside waiting for their bus somewhere around 6:40, 6:45 for the bus. That or and being done at 1:35 in the afternoon. If we put elementary in the middle slot, it ends up being right on time with the high school. It's like five minutes earlier release time than the high school. So that doesn't work because of the, I need 35 minutes between each grouping of students. We've had people ask, you know, you just keep hiring more bus drivers and more buses. We're doing a phenomenal job, one of the best jobs in any King County or anywhere else hiring bus drivers. But at the end of the day, you would need, so you would just need elementary bus drivers and buses. And then you would need a whole new set for elementary, middle school, and a whole new set for high school as well. So you need, you would need drivers for each level to actually pull that off. And that's not feasible either. So there was a lot of different pieces that we had going into this and really trying to figure it out. But ultimately, it came down to our transportation. How do we get our kids to and from? How do we ensure that we're doing right by them? I've had a number of people emailing and frustrated about why aren't we moving high school to the end of the day? A lot, you know, a lot of research out there. High school should start at that nine o'clock time period. I've done it at in former districts. It is, it's an easily a two-year process to go through that process of really engaging. Because especially if you're one of the only high schools or high school districts that are doing that in your surrounding areas, it makes it even more challenging. That's a possibility, but that's, that's not one that we considered for this, this change. We are working with a group for before and after school care in each and every one of our elementary schools, not just at Baker Station. I've definitely had a number of emails around waitlist and all of those pieces. We do not believe that's going to be an issue because we will have before and after school care at the, at each of our elementary school sites. We'll be putting that information out. We're just working through a few more of the logistics with our partners. And, and once we have that ready to go, we'll have that out there. One of the pieces is very similar cost structure for our families because we know this is, there are challenging times out there for finances. So we're trying to make sure that we're taking that into consideration as well. There will be the sliding scale very similar to what is occurring right now for families who are receiving financial support. Again, I recognize this is not this, anytime there's change, that this is not the schedule that everybody would want. I absolutely recognize that. I believe this is our, this is that schedule that works for transportation, for what we need to accomplish from the six hours and 20 minutes, the two seven-hour days for our middle and high school. We've worked diligently to try to get in a before and after school care program for all of our elementary schools. But I also recognize it's changed and it's impacting our families, our parents and our kids. I 100% hear that. And I wish it, I wish it could have been just simple and keeping it at seven hours, but that's not where we were at. I know it doesn't really matter, but we're not the only district, you know, between Batavia, Indian Prairie, we others start at that nine, 9:05 time period, but I recognize even saying that out loud, it's just like, you know, we're focused on us and that's really where the focus is. And I recognize that. Yeah, it is incredibly challenging decision to bring this forward and making sure that we're communicating with our families about this impact. So I'll end there. And any board members, questions, comments?
Paul, you started to mention the, the process that you went through. Can you just maybe expand a little bit on that as well? Right? Because I know this isn't, this isn't something that you're, we're bringing this informationally to the public right now. This isn't a board decision. This is administration doing this. So can you just talk a little bit about how you engaged?
Absolutely. Great question. So really where we start with these is around transportation. That, that, that is one of the most important pieces to this puzzle. And for us asking the hard question, how much time do you need? And if you were to ask transportation, what they would want is 45 minutes. What they would absolutely ideally would want was 45 minutes between each level. That just wasn't possible. So we worked with them to get to the 35 minutes. So that was that first round. So once we started working with that internally in our cabinet team, we started, we put out different schedules and really started looking at what are the, all the different variables? What are the different options available? And then we started engaging our teachers association. Jan Adams, teachers of president, brought together a small group of teachers who are also, and we had a number of staff members on this group and in different groups who are parents, who also raised those frustrations of, wow, nine o'clock? And when we were first looking at it, it was closer to 9:15, 9:20 when we first started going through this process. And then it was back to elementary administrators, really sitting with our elementary administrators, asking, what have we missed? Is there something we've missed here? And then continued to bring it back through the same groups again and again to see how we can move it forward. But ultimately, it came back to the, the start times for, or the length of our school days for our elementary, middle and high school, the 35 minutes in between. The process it takes to get high, to have a conversation, not make a decision, but have a conversation around the high schools starting at a much later time at nine o'clock. Recognizing that's not occurring and putting that off to the side. Does that answer your, your question?
It does. It's certainly helpful. Thank you.
So I'm not happy with this. I, I hear you and I hear the parents. I, and I also, having lived through what we had before, I understand the, the issue of not, of the middle school kids and them having to wait. I'm, I'm going to say this out loud, but I totally believe you've gone through everything. The impact on the middle schoolers was probably not as significant as the impact this is going to have on families. So I'm going to say that. I don't know if there's any wiggle room or change that could happen that we could as a board to increase resources to the middle school so that we have coverage for those kids. And believe me, my office window looked out at Thompson and saw what happens with 11 to 14-year-olds hanging out. But that is, that to me is a piece that I, I wish we could explore. I don't know that you want to do that. I understand this is not a board decision. This is administration. I would want to be sure if, if there is interest and there's interest in my part as a board member, not because I have any kids impacted by this, what it would mean to move the high school eventually to a later start time. You know, I, I had a pretty significant phone call before this board meeting where that was, you know, we're moving backwards by moving the high school to 7:15. So if there's any way that we could begin that process, knowing it would take a few years, whether it works, I know that many of the board members have kids who are at the high school level and they have expressed to me that it is a difficult switch. But if it's something we could study, I would, I would like to see that. The other thing that if you could just make sure, because I'm not clear on this piece. I had been told once that Baker Station did not have a sliding scale. That may not be true anymore. They maybe they do, I don't know. But with the new people that you're talking to, if you could be sure that that is what we need to have because I know that it gets expensive for families, especially families who don't qualify for free and reduced. So if there's some way that we could make sure that that happens, I would.
All right, let me answer those questions in reverse.
Okay.
Sliding scale, it is for families who qualify for free and reduced. So high school, that would have to be a board direction to the superintendent if the board is looking to do that. But I would highly encourage the board right now. Let's get through a few of these other things that, that we're grappling with. And if that's something that the board wants administration to look at changing the high school start time. In a couple of years, I would just want to make this very clear. That's not what we're doing here. That would be two, three years, four years down the road.
If I can energize, like what I would recommend as we take a look in the coming, you know, next 30 to 60 days about our current initiatives and statuses on those and so forth, that at that time, the board can provide direction as far as where this might be prioritized.
That sounds good. Thank you. On the middle school piece, our executive director of middle schools, or middle schools, our executive director of elementary learning, Mr. Jared Buxton was one of those teachers who stood outside for 20 to 25 minutes every day. He also reached out to the middle school administrator. And if Jared needs to, you know, step up to the microphone, it was incredibly clear from that administrator what a disservice we were doing for all those students who are waiting after school 20 minutes before the bus arrived. And that administrators who's retired and well, very well thought of in our district, that was, that was a poor decision back then to do it in that manner. Because there were so many situations occurring amongst kids and teachers, and it was not a healthy situation for both the staff members who were out there and the students who were occurring because you're literally trying to contain a couple hundred middle school students. It just did not go well from firsthand accounts. This is not Paul hearing from people who heard about it, who heard about it from firsthand accounts.
Could I also point out that when we have inclement weather, which we tend to do in the wintertime, or when it rains, that was also an issue. I had a middle schooler at that time and I remember the issues with that because where do you put all those children? How do you house that? How do you staff that? It's a, it's a completely different situation when you're staffing it at the last minute in smaller areas as opposed to outside. That was completely different. And I remember that being quite chaotic.
Ms. Bell, that's a good point. I think, you know, because you would think of the gym. But as we think about it, our middle schools have athletics, those gyms are being used on the, on the regular basis by our, by our people doing after school activities. Yeah, because honestly, when I heard it, I was like, well, yeah, we should be able to do that. But it was the digging into what really occurred was probably not the best thing for kids or staff to mimic one more time.
And, and just maybe Jared, was there also a problem in the morning? Because that was the worst time. And I, I mean, as you recall, I think I was part of a solution. So the middle schoolers came like 40 minutes before school started, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, I know at that time, the elementary school was last in the morning because they had the 8:40 to 3:00, but then they were in the middle in the PM pickup. So I don't recall as much the issue in the morning at the middle school. I think it was more the middle school got out at 3:20. Elementary got out at 3:00. You know, when the elementary schools, they're then out in the neighborhoods and they have to come back to the central location of the middle school. So it was that 20 to 25 minutes of, you know, unstructured time that maybe put kids on a bus and not the best frame of mind, or maybe didn't end the, the student's day with some of the best interactions, just trying to make sure that the safety was being abided by.
Thanks. I appreciate the conversation. Thanks.
One, just a quick piece to add. I appreciate the logistical challenges that this all entails. And then there has been a lot of thought and reflection about this. And certainly we know a lot of people are being impacted in the public, several of us here at the board table as well. And so I think what we were trying to do was, you know, the administration is trying to come up with a sensible solution with the least amount of disruption. Paul, you may have mentioned it while I was taking down some notes, but can you speak to the earliest drop-off times as well as the window?
Thank you.
We should have care available in the morning and in the evenings and what that timeframe would look like, please?
Thank you so much. So one of the pieces that we did include in, in our communication were those earliest drop-offs. That's, that's when we have staff available for parents to be able to drop their students off. So elementary, the drop-off is at 8:50. So it gives our families a little bit of wiggle room there, that 15 minutes to drop off a little bit earlier to make it somewhat more convenient. And I say that with recognizing that everyone's schedule is so vastly different. So yes, there are, we do include those, those earliest drop-off times. Thank you, Mr. Kuescher for bringing that up.
But that doesn't consider before care?
No, 100%, yes. The, the before school care will, will have some start, you know, what, what time in the morning will it begin? And when will it end before and after school? So we will have those in the, in the coming weeks. Thank you. And when will it end, before and after school? So we will have those in the, in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Let's question for me. How many routes do we still have open that we're still getting driven by the outside service?
I'm going to bring up a, I'm going to phone a friend.
The good news is, we're actually in a position right now where all of our gen ed routes are covered. We have thirteen special ed routes that are currently outsourced. But we also have seven drivers that should be starting by, I believe, two weeks from now. So we're, we're working very quickly.
Can I clarify, starting meaning they're driving?
Driving.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're, we're getting very close, and we expect by probably middle of the spring that we will have all of our routes in-house and we will not be outsourcing anything.
Have we seen, since you phoned a friend, I'm going to ask additional. Have we seen some of the other districts adopt what we've done with the offering of the health insurance for the part-time? Are we expecting some competition there? What, where are we at?
There likely will be. I know there are a few districts around us that are going to be negotiating their bus driver contracts this spring. And they took note of the contract that we adopted here in three oh three. So I expect that there is going to be some sort of increase in pay and potentially benefits on our, in our surrounding districts.
Okay, just for next, when we're starting, obviously, we're starting budget cycle again. That's something I obviously want to make sure that now that we're, we've acquired these drivers, you know, figure out what we need to do to retain them, especially if they're going to be starting to pull and other things. So, you know, I don't, I don't want us to be in a position that we were at the, at the, you know, last year. So, thank you.
Yeah, we've made significant gains in this area. Board members, any other?
The other, only one I had is can you speak to what the early releases will look like?
Yes, we will, we'll be publicizing those out in the next day or two. I cannot remember off the top of my head, Mr. Buxton, Audrey, if you remember off.
So the elementary early releases one time per month, the last Wednesday of the month. And middle school and high school is each Wednesday. And it is fifty, fifty minutes, five zero minutes of an early dismissal. So at elementary school, that means they would be dismissed on the last Wednesday of each month at two thirty-five, if my mental math is correct.
And then middle school and high school is each week, right?
Correct. And again, it would be a fifty-minute early release from the typical end time.
Would it be possible to add that?
It will.
To our, thank you.
We, we absolutely will.
And that's going to be factored in to the after-school programming?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments, board members? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, uh, next, moving to section four B, which is increasing student achievement for multilingual and Hispanic students.
For tonight, Dr. Igo and Dr. Roush will be walking the board through the, the presentation that's in front of you. We're excited to learn about this information, the next steps, the work that we are doing and the work that we're going to be doing in the future. With that, Dr. Igo, I'll hand it over to you.
Absolutely. Good evening. Just a second to make sure I've. All right. So good evening. The report tonight that we're going to be presenting involves, involved a diverse group of administrators that came from multiple areas to organize, to do the research and to put all the pieces together. I'd just like to take a minute and acknowledge them and thank them for their dedication and to building this comprehensive report that really does get to the insights. It's really to what we need to do for our students, each and every student. So obviously, Dr. Roush worked closely and put that information together. Laurel O'Brien, our executive director of student services. Tina King, our senior director of curriculum and instruction. Tracy Taylor, our director of diversity, equity and inclusion. And then Karen Pratt, who is an assistant super, or assistant director for special education as well. We have a lot of information that we're going to share this evening. We're going to try to stop at points in time to chunk that information, allow us to, allow questions to be asked. But we do ask that you wait until we have kind of reached the end of our sections to kind of gather some of those information. Ask those questions. Let me try that again. So this evening, our, really our outcomes are to present to you that comprehensive plan to improve learning, learning for our students that are multilingual, as well as our Hispanic students who are underperforming. We have really framed this report around kind of three ideas of what are the evidence-based practices? What's the success, success criteria? How do we know if we've gotten to where we need to go? And then really thinking about it from the multi-year implementation process. As we did with our student achievement report on each slide, we've kind of provided the page number of where you can find more information about the information on the slide, should you need or desire additional information as we talk about each of our topics. As always, we want to start with our commitment to our commitment statement and our core values. This work really does represent what it means to build a pathway of excellence for each of our students. The plan sets high expectations for each student while understanding that each student comes to us with a unique, unique needs and that it is our job to differentiate the types of resources that we provide, as well as the type of instruction that we provide. As we look at the strategic priorities within our strategic plan, the work that we are talking about tonight and the recommendations that we will bring forward all really work within all three areas of our strategic plan. It really is, we're going to lean heavily into that effective collaboration in the professional learning communities. We're going to talk significantly about what is instructional coherence and how does that play out, as well as making sure that we're building a culture of dignity and a sense of belonging for all of our students. This is a new slide that you haven't seen before. We've heard a couple of conversations around what are the projects and the things that you're working and how do each of those pieces come together? So what we did is we really took through what are our strategic priorities? And what is the work that we are currently doing within the learning and teaching department to take that work and move it forward? Kind of bolded each of the areas that really are impacted or what we're going to talk about this evening. And I really want to make sure that I highlight that this work connects to all of the things that we're doing and that it's important that it isn't a silo and doesn't sit outside of our work. But it really is about how does this work and what needs to happen within that guaranteed and viable curriculum and within those PLCs to ensure each student can be successful. As we look at that theory of action, you'll see as we plan, or present our plan tonight, that we really have thought about what needs to happen from the district office to the classroom and from the classroom back to the district office. And you'll see some reciprocal accountability measures that are kind of built in to ensure that we're making sure that we are all taking our responsibilities and thinking about how are we supporting kids as we move forward. Prior to talking about that comprehensive plan, we want to provide a little bit of background knowledge and information on how we did the work. And then specifically, who are we serving? Who are we specifically serving and how, who are we addressing in terms of the recommendations? So in September, we brought forward a charge statement that really identified our hypothesis for the root cause of the underperformance, kind of the scope of the work and some questions that we were using to guide the work. We had a discussion at the table across the board, and then the board provided some feedback to us. We adjusted that charge statement and we use that charge statement to be the foundation of our work. As a reminder, kind of those hypotheses as it relates to why we believe we had the underperformance really goes back to those inconsistent expectations and a lack of that rigorous guaranteed and viable curriculum. And that there might be some unintended barriers to student learning, that there is definitely inconsistent programming and services for our multilingual students across our all four levels. And then as we were approaching students, we were really coming from a mindset of remediation as opposed to a mindset of acceleration. So how do we pull those things together? As we were doing our work, we recognized that we had a lot of information to share. So we came to the board back in October to provide you with an understanding specifically around our multilingual learners as it relates to what's our current state, what are the services and programs that we have, as well as what are the federal and state laws that guide our work. We absolutely recognize that it's been a while since October and that there might have be some questions. But we're really going to do this report from the mindset of we're building from that information and knowledge, but are happy to go back and answer any questions that you might have as it relates to the work that we did in October. And then just kind of highlighting who do we serve? And when we talk about our multilingual students and our Hispanic students, who are we, who are we serving and what does that look like? So our multilingual learners really make up seven percent of our entire enrollment. And while our families represent forty-nine different languages, the vast majority of our students do speak Spanish. But while they speak Spanish, those students actually come from fourteen different countries. So that brings some different perspectives into how we do things. It's also important that we acknowledge that our, our multilingual students are more likely to be eligible for free and reduced lunch, as well as for McKinney-Vento services. What that means really is that as we're building our plan, and we'll talk about that this evening, is that we need to take those factors into consideration and make sure that we are building services and supports that address both of those issues. Our Hispanic students make up fourteen percent, fourteen percent of our entire population, with only a third of those students being eligible for multilingual services. So that indicates two-thirds of our Hispanic students, English is their home language. Our Hispanic students are more likely to be eligible for free and reduced lunch, again, which puts us in a position of, as we're thinking about services and plans, that we really need to address. We need to be thinking from the lover of how, how free, how that might be impacting their ability to learn. Going to stop there and see if there's any questions kind of about the first part of that report.
I have a couple.
You go first.
When we consider the right-hand side of page ten, the fourteen percent of the population, we saw that come up both in the equity audit, as well as in repeatedly in the academic performance report, the student achievement report. When we talk about the two-thirds who are ineligible for language services, it tells me that nine percent are English proficient. It tells me that we have five percent who have yet to achieve English proficiency. When we consider each of those two subgroups within the Hispanic population, how do we think about the performance gaps between, not between each of those subgroups, but for each of those subgroups? And what's the programming difference for the five percent who have yet to achieve English proficiency? And for the nine percent who are English proficient, or as you put it, have English as their home language? So how do we think about those two different groups?
Yeah, and there's a slide that I'll be talking about in a couple of slides ahead that really does talk about that. We have to really account for three, each of those factors and that there are many different, many of the evidence-based practices that support one also support all three. But then there are very specific ones that we need to address. So for our students that we'd have to really think through, if they're not, our Hispanic students that are not eligible for multilingual services, so they're English proficient, we would then look to see as there are the free and reduced lunch, is that a piece that's impacting? Because we know that, that they are, they're more likely to be eligible for services, our free and reduced lunch services. And in that case, the things that we need to take into account really are is how, how are outside factors impacting the student? And what can we do to help alleviate some of those factors across time? So how is poverty impacting and what can we do to address those? So we'll talk a little bit about our, in our report tonight, we'll talk about the importance of making sure that we have really clear connections for families in terms of, into our community services so that we can support some of the things that they need, as well as also leaning into, we need to make sure that we're building background knowledge and because those are students who may not have had some of the same experiences that other students have had. So those are just two. We'll talk about multiple, but we really do need to think about each of those and what are the ones that apply across multiples areas and which ones are specific to students? So for our students who are not yet English proficient, really that focus is on how are we building English proficiency while utilizing content area skills? So that we're actually kind of working across two things at the same time, or that we're using a unified language framework, which we'll talk a little bit about in some future slides as well. Does that answer your question, Mr. Lecker?
It starts to address it, I think, the, the discussion about what's the programmatic difference and how we think about the overlap, particularly for eligibility for free and reduced lunch services and what's the uniqueness of programming to address that population, which, once addressed, has a positive impact if there's high overlap here. So yes, it starts to.
Okay.
Did you have more, Mr. Lecker? I did, I had a question on that same slides, on slide page ten. Can you review again briefly, what are the various EL services that are offered and then majority accept?
Absolutely. I'm actually going to have Dr. Roush talk a little bit about that. Is that okay?
So we do get into that a little bit later in the presentation, but when we think about kind of at the elementary level, one of our primary service delivery models for our native Spanish speakers is the one-way dual-language program. So that's our full-time bilingual program that's offered to our students, K five. It extends, we offer a Spanish, a bilingual Spanish class, bilingual social studies class at the middle school to kind of extend and provide that opportunity through the middle school. And we brought forward the opportunity of offering the Spanish language arts at the middle school so that we would have that full scope of a dual-language continuum for students in K eight. Outside of that, we do have part-time bilingual services that are offered at schools where there are twenty or more Spanish-speaking students. So they have the ability to be supported by a bilingual-endorsed educator who can provide those students with instructional supports in Spanish as it is needed for them. So that's K twelve across our continuum for students. And then primarily, delivery is support for students in that EL or ESL model, right? Supporting with their English language development. At the elementary level, we have teachers that are co-teaching or pushing in to provide those services to students. At the middle school, we have that as well, but we offer a co-taught English language arts class for students. So it's an ELA class, like a sixth-grade ELA class that's taught by a certified English language arts teacher and then partnered with a certified EL teacher. And they work together to provide that instruction to students. And so we offer that. At the high school, then there are specific courses that students can enroll in to take ESL. So ESL one, two, three and four. And then they have an opportunity to get a resource class, so additional supports from an EL or bilingual-endorsed teacher to provide them with supports in their core content areas. I left out EC, I apologize. At the EC pre-K level, all of our classroom teachers are endorsed and with an ESL endorsement or are currently working on their ESL endorsement. So they're able to provide that instruction within the classroom. And we do have bilingual sections of pre-K EC as well. I think I hit it all.
So I'm trying to differentiate the ones where there's an acceptance that's required versus, there's many where we're pushing in. So really, the only ones where there's an acceptance that's required will be the one-way dual-language and then probably the, the course offerings at the middle school and high school. Is that fair?
We do at the elementary level, even though we do push in, we do have parents who say, but I do not wish to have my child work with the EL teacher. And that is, they might be pushing into the classroom, might be working with the classroom teacher. But we certainly have parents who are like, I don't want those services for my child. Very few. I mean, when we think about it, our refusal rate at the elementary is lower and it gets higher as we go on to the other levels.
It, it, it's about five percent at the elementary level. Five percent of families will refuse EL services, four percent at the middle school. And then we see that number grow to about almost eighteen percent at the high school.
And just to refresh my memory, we do have a group of students who, who would qualify for dual-language one-way, but we haven't been able to do that service because we can't find it. Am I remembering correctly? A different language than Spanish, nor, northern Greek.
Job.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we have, yeah, we have twenty or more Gujarati speakers at northern Greek. We posted for that position. We've been unable to, ah, excuse me, unable to find an appropriately credentialed teacher to fill that role. And so we've been having after-school teaching, tutoring for those students by a Gujarati-speaking tutor. But we continue to seek that position to fill it.
Okay. All right. So as I mentioned earlier, this work doesn't exist within a silo. All right. So um as I mentioned earlier, this work doesn't exist within a silo, but it's rather connected to all of the work that we do. So I'm gonna make some connections here to kind of our continuous improvement. You know, improving our student outcomes is about engaging in that comfort, constant conversation around continuous improvement. And as we've heard us say before, which is really built on building systems and structures that work together um to break each of the components that we've kind of outlined on this slide to come together, to work interdependently um to support kids in, in making progress over time. Um, we know in the research supports that once these components are solidly in place, student achievement appre- uh, pr- improves for all students. However, when those aren't in place, for our students that are multilingual or our Hispanic students or our free and reduced lunch students, when those systems and services aren't working together, they're greatly impacted or more impacted by the lack of those services and supports being in place. So it's really important that we build that solid foundation um that we're utilizing for for continuous improvement and working to support all of our students. Probably the most important aspect that really we want to kind of stress here is that there is not one strategy or one program that will make a difference. And then when we're talking about this idea of improving those outcomes, it's much more about how are we working and building our systems and structures to interdependently support and move students forward? So it really is about all of the pieces coming together and not one individual program. So our overall improvement strategy that we've identified really starts with the need to set common rigorous um standards for all of our students and then really think about how we differentiate, how we support students, either by adjusting our instructional practices, by adjusting the resources that we provide to meet those needs of those students. In order to do that, we identified these kind of five levers for improving change. Um, and that we're going to adjust and refine them throughout our programming uh that we're going to discuss this evening. So this is a slide I was, I was mentioning earlier. And that when we're talking about how we've built this program, we really need to think about and want to acknowledge that we have three factors that we need to consider. We, then when we develop the plan, we need to talk about what's the impact of race, what's the impact of poverty, and what's the impact of English proficiency? And in many cases, like I mentioned, those evidence-based practices are distinct, um, are distinct across all three, or they, they'll really support all three. And so an example that um I provided earlier was that high expectations, rigorous assignments, regardless, is an important piece to improving learning for all of our students. We need to have those pieces in place. For students who are impacted by poverty, it's important that we really thought through what are the services and prompts or supports that they need to address outside factors that may be impacting their, their life. So how are we making sure and how are we making sure families are connected to community services uh in regards to what they might need to move those forward, forward? As well as talking and thinking about what are those trauma-informed practices? We know that um students that are impacted by poverty are, are exposed to what we call chronic stress. And that chronic stress change literally changes the way their brain is, is, is wired. And so therefore, how are we changing and working from a trauma-informed practice process to help students move forward? And then if we, when we think about our students who are impacted by the um English proficiency, it really is about thinking about how often and where can we provide that native instruction? We always want to provide instruction in their native language to the greatest extent possible. We want to think about how can we utilize our content to leverage and move English proficiency forward? The research is clear that one of the most important components, or if not the most important component of closing our achievement gaps is the need to have a leader who believes that all students can learn and requires, and this is the really important part, that staff behave, behaviors reflect this belief. While we can't change a person's beliefs, we can set up systems and structures that ensure our staff engage actively in the behaviors that we've identified on this slide. The reciprocal accountability measures that we built into our implementation plans are also key components to making this happen. I'm gonna stop here, see if there's any questions before I turn it over to uh Dr. Ish, who's going to then dive into the other four levers of change.
Um, I've heard the phrase uh one-way dual language said, uh stated multiple times. We, I thought we were moving toward a two-way dual language and I, I'm interested in, in that as part of this process.
Yeah. So when we get to that, we're going to talk about the systems and process. So with the question we were answering earlier is like, what are the services you currently have in place? So that's why we were talking about the one-way dual language. When we get to lover three or four, I can't remember which one now, we'll talk about um moving to a two-way dual language program.
Just real quick, Christine, and I know you touched on this, and we've obviously talked a lot about this too as well. Can you touch a little bit more on, you know, how it's different with this expectation? You talk about effective leadership and and the expectation that all students can and must learn. Can you tell us a little bit of how that differs from maybe some of the initiatives that we've done historically that may not mirror what we're trying to do now?
Yeah, I think probably the biggest piece here is like we, we're, we're naming and calling out the importance of having those high expectations and then not just having those high expectations, but being really clear about what does that look like? And what behaviors do you engage in when we, when we say you believe all kids can? And it's, I think in the past, we've really focused in on what is the, what's the instructional strategy we need? What's the um support we might be able to put in place? How can I provide remediation um for a student? But ultimately, we need to step back and think about it from the perspective of, we have to build the system and the process because we know the research also tells us that kids rise to the expectation that you set. Right? And so when we set a high expectation, kids will meet that high expectation. But when we set that high expectation, we have to be really clear about what does that look like? And we talk about, that means every kid has got grade level standards and we're really clear about what proficiency looks like. Right? And we're holding every kid to that standard. We're not going to be okay lowering the standard. That we're constantly monitoring that impact of our instruction. And when it's not working, that is our job as the staff to do something different. Not the student's job. It's our job to say something's not working, we need to change what we're doing. So those are just some examples.
I think that's really critical and I, I really believe that that's what we want as a board. Because we're not going to be able to fix the poverty levels of schools. No matter how much busing we try to do, it's not going to happen. So it really comes down to, do we believe that kids from poverty, kids who don't have English as their first language can learn and be successful? And if we do, I think this is really critical for us as a board that we stand firmly. This isn't just to say it, which is what I think we've done for years in education. We believe all kids can learn. However, this one can't, and so I'm gonna let them scoot through. And I think we have to be, I mean, I'm saying it as a, as an educator, that we have to really stand firm, that we expect all of our kids, no matter from where they've come from, they are going to be highly successful in this district. And I think as a board, we have to stand behind that because it may mean resources that look different. So, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That was a, that was a soapbox.
No, I, I do have a question, though. It's, at some point, um later, or even in this presentation, are we at the point where we're going to specifically talk about things that are unique to the strategy for this group?
Yes, we are.
Because even what we just talked about with effective leaders, my expectation would be that we apply this to every student.
Hundred percent agree with you. Yes. And that's what, yes, I was trying to say, we first start with building that solid foundation, which is here. Now we're going to talk a little bit about, now let's get specific about what we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd just like to add one more thing that uh you're talking about putting resources, Mr. McCabe, and that you're correct, I agree. Um, that we have spent a lot of time in education talking about how all students can learn. Uh, one of the things we have to do is be able to stand behind the teachers who are holding kids to these standards as well. And quite frankly, for most of my thirty-five years in education, that's where I've seen it fall apart. We need administrators standing behind the teachers who are holding kids to standards.
Yeah, it's creating that entire system that we, we understand what grade level standards are. You, you're absolutely right, Mr. McNally. That we have high expectations in each and everywhere in our classrooms. That third grade is third grade across this district. That Algebra One is Algebra One across this district. And Algebra One or third grade or whatever it is is the rigorous expectation of the standards. That's what we're held accountable to. Because as Dr. Igo said, we know through research, students will rise to the occasion. We have to adjust our instructions. We have to be looking at data on a constant, on a consistent basis. And those are the systems and structures we're putting into place right now. So we know that we, we have our teachers' backs. We're working directly with our teachers. Uh, teachers uh are consistently coming and working with the learning and teaching department. One of the things that the board did um through the, the previous negotiations, uh which I believe was a really wise decision, what was bringing back department chairs. The work that Dr. Igo and others within the learning, teaching team are doing to partner with, because I believe that's really what I hear you saying is, we've got to be together. We've got to be doing this work together. It can't be you're saying this and I'm saying this and doing two different things. That's the structures where we are literally working on each day within the learning, teaching department as well as, and I will, will emphasize this, along with our school leaders. It is the, it is this group of people coming together and having that same message, that same understanding of what are we trying to do? Because I think for too long in education, what we've done, we work in silos. This group's doing this work, this group's doing this work, and this group's doing this work, and we are not speaking to each other. That's why it takes time to build this. But for me, this was literally one of the first things that I talked, spoke about with our administrators a year and a half ago on my first day with school leaders, was the importance of their work. Principals understanding that they are the, one of the, the most impactful drivers of change there is at a school level. Teachers on a classroom level, principals at a school level and how critical we, we do this work together. So I absolutely hear what you're saying. Sorry, I got on that same soapbox.
Back to me. And I think I better turn it over to Dr. Rush.
Okay. So now that we have an understanding of those foundations of continuous improvement, we want to continue our discussion on some specific strategies and those key levers that we have outlined for improving student outcomes. So for each of the key levers, we've broken it down into some very specific strategies or approaches. Um, and then we've developed a multi-year plan for each one of those. Perfect. Um, so you'll, you can see here, the second key lip, uh, lever is our rigorous core instruction. And so within that, we have identified three main categories for this lever. So guaranteed and viable curriculum, best first-time instruction for students, and increasing access to high rigor um courses. So within each of those categories, then you can see that we have identified specific action steps. The ones in bold represent a change in a practice or a new strategy to be implemented. And you'll see this is the format that we're going to use throughout the presentation for you. Um, so let's first talk about um what, what we're currently already doing or what's currently already in place for students. Um, and so in alignment with that recent AP audit that we had, you can see that we've been doing work in terms of increasing enrollment to AP courses and in trying to increase access and enrollment in our AT and Infinity courses. As part of our PLC work that we had a long time talking about here, really laying out that we are, been addressing those common understandings of proficiency. So as Dr. Gordon said, third grade proficiency, this is what third grade proficiency looks like, Algebra One proficiency, that's what that looks like. Um, and then scaffolding instruction. So how do we support kids to have access to that grade level standard, that grade level content? Um, and that's work that we've been doing and continue to do um throughout the work as we roll out the PLC process. And you can see that outlined in the timeline. Um, we're going to start then with the item that's bolded in the middle column, which is providing that explicit instruction in a language and knowing that providing explicit, explicit instruction is important specifically for our multilingual learners, but also benefits our Hispanic students as well. So to do this effectively, teachers need to utilize a language development framework such as the one that's developed by WEEDO. WEEDO, the ones who've created the access test, which measures English proficiency for our English language learners. So utilizing that language framework calls for the development of academic language, activating background knowledge, developing oral language, and scaffolding instruction for students. But for that to be effective, for us to implement a framework, we have to have it embedded or anchored in the use of a supportive curricular resource and one that reflects the diversity of our students and also then provides for teachers what that scaffold instructional supports should be for our students to get to that grade level content. So on the following slide, you're going to see a chart that shows the curricular resources that have been adopted and the status of the future adoptions, adoptions as it relates to that supportive curricular resource. Um, so you can see that we have it put together by grade level bands and content areas, and the core resources are currently in place um in D three oh three. When we think about that recent literacy adoption for K eight, the embedded language supports that we, that are available in the resources for students were really was one of the deciding factors that led us to selecting that resource. And as we think about the unit launches, the work, the professional learning, each time our teachers are about to teach a new unit, we're really focusing on how to support the educators to understand what the resources, what the resource provides for them to be able to do that instruction for all of their students, but specifically for their multilingual students. There are resources that are outlined within that and strategies and instructional approaches that they can use. Um, we have several CAIs in the process of reviewing curriculum materials, and you can see that in order to create that guarantee and viable curriculum for those content areas. And then as we think about going through that process, that key consideration is going to be, how do we provide, how does that resource provide access and scaffolding for our multilingual learners? So when you look at this timeline, you can see that our philosophy and our approach and what we've set up here is that supporting multilingual learners is a responsibility of all teachers. It's not in a silo, it doesn't sit with a specific group of teachers. It's a responsibility for all teachers. And you can see that the focus of the language development framework is not just something that certain teachers support. Um, but rather, it's the work that all teachers, all educators engage with. Um, and it's integrated into the work that we do with curriculum instruction. It's a part of it. I'll do one more lever and then I'll leave it open up for questions. So we go to the third lever, um, which is supportive learning environments. Um, and there's two main categories for this one. I'm building that culture of dignity and creating those social cultural learning environments. Um, you can see that we've already been working through that process and selecting materials and resources with this lens through ICA, CAI process, as well as those inclusive practices that we have embedded in our PLC process. Um, students have an, for access to a variety of translation tools. We've really worked to provide um devices so kids can have more regular access to be able to do that translation on their own. Um, but as an action step, our work is really to ensure that that implementation of these practices is systemic and consistent throughout our entire system, which builds, calls for the building of the capacity of our educators to understand what those are, how to use those, and that continual professional learning to be able to implement that in their classrooms. So let's focus on what's new or different on this side. Um, our data on belonging showed that there was a decline in the sense of belonging reported by our students at the secondary level. Um, and in order to address those, those specific student needs, we need more information. And as we learned with the AP audit, when we talk to the students directly, they're very open and honest about the strengths and challenges, the challenges that they're facing in our system. And so if we are to really capture um our next steps and where our opportunities are, we need to talk to the students about their experiences. Um, so that we're better, better able to address their needs specifically. Uh, we need to engage in a dialogue with them to better understand what they have identified their needs are and what potential solutions we can step to. At the beginning of the presentation, we shared one of the strategies um for supporting students living in poverty was to implement trauma-informed practices. Dr. Igo talked to you about that. Um, we know that students living in poverty experience chronic stressors and that impacts how their brains develop and how they respond in that learning environment. So in order to build those supportive learning environments, we have to have educators who have the knowledge on those trauma-informed practices. So when we look at this timeline, the key action steps to support specifically creating those supportive learning environments for multilingual learners as well as our Hispanic students. Um, you can see that really apart from the work, um that's related to the student focus groups is largely focused on providing professional learning to our educators. And that's going to be essential to kind of build their capacity to be able to be that's that strong support for students within that learning environment. And this is where I'm going to pause. Allow for a question.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Seeing no other green lights, I'll just uh ask for the floor. It's about, um, when we look at the fourteen percent of the student population that are Latino or Hispanic students, it's about fifteen hundred students, roughly. When we look at those who are English proficient, given the numbers, it's about a thousand. If we look at the percent to our English learners, it's about five hundred fifty, something like that, roughly. Um, when I look at your slide fourteen and we talk about uh supporting students living in poverty and we talk about supporting multilingual learners, um, we have nine percent of the students in the district as a whole who are Hispanic or Latino with um English language proficiency. in the district as a whole, who are Hispanic or Latino with, um, English language proficiency. Is the incidence of poverty higher? We know it's three times higher across the 14%. Is the incidence higher in that nine percent with English language proficiency than it is across the whole? When we look at a third and we look at the English language, um, learners, we know that that population has many, um, early arrivals and others, uh, other challenges. So we expect the poverty percentage or the free and reduced lunch percentage to be much higher in that five percent. And what I'm trying to get to here, guys, is you have three different activity groups, supporting Hispanic students, supporting students living in poverty and supporting multilingual learners. I'm trying to parse out which portion affects which. And so when I talk about the nine percent who are English proficient, what I'd really like to understand is for those who are not eligible for free and reduced lunch, does their performance match the population as a whole? When I think about those who are, um, free and reduced lunch eligible, does that group's performance match the free and reduced population as a whole? Because what that tells me then is that in that nine percent, we likely have a poverty challenge to manage versus some other type of challenge. And if we look at the five percent that are English language learners, we may have a stacked up challenge of both poverty and language acquisition as a challenge. And so when I think about those things programmatically, there's nothing unique about the subgroup that says, hey, um, other than language or language proficiency in English or, um, qualification or poverty experience that complicates their ability to be successful. And so when we see all of the different activities that you have stacked up in here, it strikes me that a focus on language acquisition and poverty could be very powerful if we understood the distribution of those two challenges within the 14%. Recognizing that it's going to be, or hypothesizing as I am now, it's going to be quite different for the nine percent than it is for the five percent. And when I hear some of the things that you have laid out so far and through the rest of the presentation, they still look commingled to me. And it strikes me that you've done a nice job here on slide 14 of calling out the fact that they're different. And they're different challenges for us to get after. And so one's a poverty challenge, one's a stacked language and poverty challenge, perhaps.
Let me, yeah, I, I think as we built this plan, and I can speak a little bit more cohesively. I need to like walk through kind of the data that we gathered. But, um, we did find that our students, whether, if they weren't eligible, we found that mostly if our students were eligible Hispanic and also eligible for EL services, they also were very highly likely to also have free and reduced lunch, right? Yeah. Same felt, fell, fell true the other way. So we found that we, we are finding that we have different places in terms of stackability, right? Like we have one arena that is definitely poverty for our Hispanic students. When we pull out the poverty, we do see that those students are more likely to look like the rest of the population, not every kid. And we're starting to get to kind of small numbers, so it's hard to say. But we do see that their achievement looks similar. But when they aren't achieving, it really is related more often than not to poverty. Am I making sense? It's like
Quite clear, thank you.
Yeah.
When we think about some of the, even the, the, some of the commentary in, um, the public comments today, we have certain schools who qualify uh, for title services and we likely have high concentrations of, um, Hispanic populations of some of those schools. We've seen that in the data. And so one of the questions that I would pose is when we think about all of the things that you have reflected here, they're all very general and they're district wide. And while I appreciate that, especially for, uh, what is your column one here on slide 14? I'm wondering, and I'll continue to press on what's special about those places where we have student populations by the housing available near those schools and by the fact that we've made other decisions about the value of neighborhood schools that says, what are the differential resources for those schools where we have high concentrations and high population counts of this 14, 14% and particularly of that five percent? And so to me, you know, we're, we're talking about district wide, which is fantastic. But those title schools, we have to talk about those specifically in, in the program.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you. And when we talked about that strategy being setting high expectations and then differentiating resources, that is one of the things that we're talking about. And so we didn't get into specific schools just as, because as we were working through this process, we didn't know where the boundaries were going to land or what that's going to look like. But we already do put additional resources into our title one schools. So for instance, we have, um, additional social work support at our schools that are title one. Now I believe we're going to have to reorganize that once those boundaries are set and we have a better handle. Cause right now they're pretty similar across our schools. But we're going to have to readjust how we put those services and supports in place. Um, so I agree with you that we will have to get to a point where we differentiate that we need more of this at this particular school based upon these needs. Because we're going to need, you know, we've had additional social work support. We have had additional reading specialist support. So kind of based on those things, but we need to get those boundaries set. And then we'll start to talk about, and we'll talk a little bit too, when we talk about family engagement, about changing what family engagement looks like. And then thinking about, um, you know, a community liaison. And how might we be able to leverage that to help support our students in poverty? Because those are helping them understand and how, how do you access and use those resources? Or how, more importantly, can we make the school a center for some of those resources? So families can easily gather and pull some of those resources together.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, I would agree with Mr. Lackner. I think, um, uh, kind of to my comment earlier as well, I think a lot of what's been presented here is very district wide. And what I'm really looking at, even if we talk about the 14%, what is our strategy or plan to drive academic performance with the five percent versus the 19%? And then there's even another level to the point of it being school specific based on the demographics of that school. I, I feel like we're missing another level of detail to understand how are we going to differentiate the approach for these specific segments that we're trying to improve? Because as I said earlier, again, a lot of these things philosophically and otherwise, I would expect all the teachers to be doing. But I don't think that that will necessarily target and drive improvement to specific groups as well. Because it's so district wide, it becomes diluted.
One of the pieces that I would jump in and say, you know, as I'm looking at 14, I, I believe, you know, that, that first column, supporting Hispanic students, you're going to see that consistency across our, our district where I see the differentiation is in column, the, the second and third column. When we're explicitly teaching academic vocabulary to build academic knowledge and background. That is a very specific strategy that we'd be using in our title one schools with, uh, in our, uh, dual language program. Our, our TP, TBI and TPE programs. We're going to be absolutely very specific on those family support structures there. That's going to look very different at the, at our title schools and, um, other places. Yes, could we, could we have listed out the, the exact schools? But this is literally for that grouping of students. When I think about instruction in native language to greatest extent possible, I really think about each and every one of those schools. So I'm thinking about an, I'm thinking about an Anderson right now. So I could apply one or, or two and three to Anderson. I can apply two to three to Richmond Davis. When I really think about the depth and complexity around that first bullet in, in column three, instruction in native language to the greatest extent possible. That is a, that is a big undertaking, um, that, that is only, only occurring in, in, in very small subsets of, of our district, uh, the language development framework. So we have some bigger ideas in here around what does WIDA look like from the language development framework? That's very specific and very intentional for a very sub, uh, uh, specific group of students. Integrating content in English instruction. This is a critical aspect. Dr. Roosh can speak to this much more clearly than I can. But, uh, recognizing this work i- is foundational to where, where we need to go for especially our, our multilingual learners, how does that look? So maybe getting into more of that depth and complexity would, would maybe help a little bit around. So think about your title schools, think about the Richmond Davis, the Anderson, think about, uh, Munn Hall. Think about those pieces as you kind of tackle that question. Dr. Roosh, you want to jump in there? Thank you for that.
And I think as we get into maybe that programming, instruction and design, that's really where you're going to see some of those really intentional kind of clear differences or where we would kind of call out some specific things we might be doing, um, as well as that parent and family engagement. And I, I will try to make kind of bring that lens in, um, as we're talking that through.
If I can just jump in here, the, the other, another thing that pops into my head about this, um, obviously, one of the things we want to do is to do the best we can to balance demographics. Because I think we, we're seeing what's really a poverty problem more than a, than a language issue. Uh, but the other thing is, um, what percentage of the, of the, uh, limited English proficiency, uh, families are transitory? In other words, they're, they're in a district for a brief period of time. So whatever we're doing is not going to have a, a long lasting impact because they're not here for a long period of time.
We have a very low transient population in D three oh three. I don't have the number right off the top of my head, but it is a, I'm sure it's in the report, uh, somewhere. But it is a very low number within D three oh three. And even so much so, when you're looking at the individual schools by school, um, it's a little bit higher than obviously the diff, district average. But if you're looking at our title schools, even that transient number, because that, that's something that the state tracks is, you know, and put up on our report card. I don't know, Dr. Igo, if you had that.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely have for our multilingual learners. Um, there's definitely more transient than, than, than overall. So the mobility rate, and this is in the student achievement report, so it's not in the report you have in front of you today. Um, is that our mobility rate, um, last school year was four percent. For our students that, um, qualified for EL services, it's 11%.
And so just definition wise for the
Thank you.
Can we explain what transient is, please?
That's the mobility rate. So that is, um, students who are with us, um, students that are, how many students are moving in and out versus how many are staying with us that are stable?
And that could be from school to school. It could be, I go from, uh, this elementary, this D three oh three elementary to another D three oh three or elementary, or actually leaving the district or state, um, to another area.
So, so it's not, so it's not, it's could be
It could
in the district.
It could be, it could be, but often, oftentimes what we see there i- is, it is a financial piece. Um, whatever is occurring within the home environment, um, for rent, for, for mortgage, whatever it is, there, there's some struggles. So we're, we're moving on. So often time in a district like ours, it's not as similar that you see it or, or the, where they're moving within the district, it happens on occasion, but oftentimes it's moving out of our district, uh, or another this family moving into our district.
Within one school year.
Yep. Yes, 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 thank you. Within the school year, within that one school year.
So I'm, I'm talking about people who, I guess I'm talking to a little more longitudinal as well. Cause I know this was something that was expressed years back when Richmond Davis first became an issue. Um, that one of the issues was that, um, the district had said, one of the problems that was an intractable problem for them was students who would be with us for a year, two years, then they'd be out. And it sounds like it's a poverty problem as well. I mean, again, it's, it's a, uh, housing issue because of poverty.
It is.
But again, um, even at the rate we're talking about here, we're still talking about three times, almost three times the rate of, of the other students, um, over 10%. So, um, I think it's something that needs to be considered as we, as we look at this. And I think, again, I'm not talking about within a school year. I'm talking about, you know, if you have somebody, you say have somebody starts in kindergarten, they go kindergarten, first, second grade, and then they're out. Now they're, whatever supports, whatever we've done for that student is not being reflected. Conversely, you have kids who come in and whatever's occurring with those students, they might here, be here for second, third, fourth. Whatever's occurring there is, is maybe being reflected in a different way.
Mr. McNally, I think, I think to, to your point, right? I, that the kids that are, are here for two years and then moving out aren't, aren't showing up on the report, right? What I'm more concerned about, based on kind of what we've talked about previously, is those students who've missed the critical first, second, third, whatever, earlier years of instruction. And now we're on our radar and now need remediation. They haven't been, they haven't been up to a, a, a D three oh three, you know, our new standards based, right? And they need the extra instruction, they need that extra support. And, and that's where identifying those folks and making sure that we have paths to remediate them. And I think some of that's in the scaffolding. I think, I think a, a lot of it more, and as we're, I don't want to interrupt you guys more on, on where you're going with this. But I'm certainly very interested in that, in that rigor aspect. And you and I have talked about that, uh, over the district. And then how we identify those students who are not at, at level, not at rigor. How do we get them to rigor? Cause that's, to me, that's where I'm seeing the challenge. See, we're, we're really good at identifying, hey, we, we missed this. Now we're back to that first time instruction, right? Guaranteed for, you know, and, but how do, how do we get everybody back up?
Yeah, and that's why I'm bringing up the, the kids who, not just kids who move out after a couple of years, but kids who move in after a couple of years as well. They think is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just, I'm a little confused because we asked, we asked LNT to do and charge them to do this. And, and you've had this in front of you for a couple of weeks now. I think we're building, I think it's been said more than once, we're building structures here, which is district wide. This is, this is really good work. This is important work that's going to change lives, change the learning of many kids. Now, if you're asking for how does a teacher do a math lesson? That's getting far more detailed and I think is what you're asking for. But if you go through the report, there are places WIDA has explained what needs to happen for kids who are learning a, a second language. And that part you, you can get into and you can dig into it. So I'm a little confused as to what is it you, since, since Matt and I are co-chairs, we really asked for you to be specific so that when they came to report. And so now I'm hearing you're not hitting it yet. So I want to be sure. I don't want us to have to go through this three more times. So are you asking for exactly specifically, what are we going to do with the kids? Who are trauma, um, impacted, who are language? You know, what is it you really want to hear? And I, and I'm saying it very sincerely because I'm not clear exactly.
Um, I'll try to be as clear as possible. We have known for well over a year that we have a subgroup of Hispanic students who have the opportunity to perform better and to match the population as a whole. We have 65% of those students who are proficient in English. We have 35% of those students who are English learners. What I would like to, to know, and much of it is included in the report, is what we're going to do to ensure that that population matches the performance as the pop, of the population as a whole over time. And there's a lot of steps included in this report that get there. And there is some necessity to call out the fact that English learners have a different set of needs and that the entire issue set is, um, confounded by the poverty issue. And so what I really want to see is for us to get clear about how much of the challenge to improve the performance of that 14% subgroup is a poverty challenge? And how much of it is a language challenge? And have programs that address each of those different pieces, both independently and cooperatively. And I think there are pieces of it embedded here. I think the, um, explicit nature of calling out that the English learners have a unique set of situations. Then do, um, English proficient Hispanic people who also have, um, poverty challenges and poverty burdens to deal with is an important factor. So that, that's what I would like to see.
All right, because I, thank you for making that much clearer for me. Um, because I want to be sure, when I look at what is being done in the timelines, I see that those things are, have already started to be addressed. Um, we haven't talked about what success factors look like. Um, and I do believe that district wide, we have kids who will fit into the poverty level, we may not even know they exist. Their parents may not have told us that their lives look like their lives do. So it is a district wide issue. It isn't just one or two schools, and it's definitely not just title schools. So this should be a district wide focus of how do we, how do we change instruction? How do we support kids to get to? How do we support kids to get to, so that they're being successful? So I.
I, I think we can probably all agree on those points and say, there's a lot, uh, recorded in this report that suggests continuous improvement activities in which the district could, should and will engage in. And, and I think that's perfect. I think one of the challenges for the board is to say, what's differential? And where should we be taking resources in order to supply additional resources to points of need? Um, Mr. Lentz mentioned earlier that we'll get into another budget cycle, we'll get into another budget cycle. And part of the question will be, what out of this report requires additional resources? And from what other programs should we draw in order to ensure that that fourteen percent's, um, academic performance improves over time? And so when, when I press on it, it's, it's under the guise of, yes, let's take all of those continuous improvement things that you have reflected in the report, and let's get going as fast as we can, and, and you guys will do that. The second question then is, what is it that you'd ask of the board other than folks like me saying, tell me about the five percent, tell me about the nine percent? I'll be here, I'll keep asking that question, but the question that, that I, or what I ask you to bring back is, what investments do you require in order to support that work? And if it is simply, um, embedded within ongoing activities, then I'll sit here in November of next year at the student achievement report, and I'll ask, have those activities delivered? And the, the results will be in the performance measures against that fourteen percent subgroup. And, and we'll know then, but I'd rather you come forward with, these are the four or five things that really require additional time, energy and investment.
So we're going to get there. Um, we do have a couple of things that we've called out in terms of, uh, what we need, um, particularly for our EL students and then for our, um, our students that are impacted by poverty.
I, oh, just, I just want to tack on to what Mr. Lackner said there, you know, I previously asked Paul, and I know it's, I think it's coming to an L N T or some other meeting about what we're doing at Richmond, right? Couple of board members have brought up, hey, this is district wide versus, you know, we, we know that we have certain schools, right? And I've previously spoken at this table about how we've been splitting resources between buildings or doing other things and not addressing challenges here. I know that there's at least one headcount in, in the report, right? Um, but I, I would like to see this at, at a school level. Uh, again, because we, we do know it, and I know that there are certain things that are obviously going to have to come after the redistricting. Um, but again, I, I, I would like to see it at a school level. I, I think, again, to Mr. Lackner's point, you know, we, we know where free and reduce, reduced lunch are going to, you know, eventually go once redistrict, excuse me, once redistricting is complete, then we'll know, you know, our demographics around it. So the, and there's only so, so many places that they can go just based on many of the locations here. So that, that is an ask, and it is something that, again, as we go into the new cycle, I want to make sure that we put ourselves on a good foot here.
That they're just, I mean, there will have to be differentiation of resources and support in my, in my view. And I think what Mr. Lentz is saying as well, once we get the boundaries done. So I think that's really what, what you're, I think where you're hearing from several board members is how are we differentiating the approach for this population?
I, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, and I appreciate kind of the clarity. And so I think there's a couple of things that we can do to help break some clarity. Um, one is we can talk very specifically about schools and what that looks like. And a lot of these things need to happen across many, many schools, but we can, we can prioritize, we need to prioritize, right? Which is what you're saying. And while we've been thinking about that, we are, we didn't articulate exactly down to that detail of, we're going to prioritize, um, trauma-informed practices to Richmond, right? Like that's going to, we're going to, all buildings need it, but like, at this moment, that's where we're going to start, and we're going to, we're going to talk about and put those supports in place there first, and then build out. So we can definitely take some of these things and kind of take, take it and look at that. And, um, I meant to say, like, we've got a lot of things in here that are going to help address those things. So, um, the other thing I think we can do, and is I can reorganize this a little bit to do exactly what you're asking me to do. I tried to like bring it together because a lot of them go so much like this, and to make it feel a little bit more cohesive. But we can pull these apart pretty easily about, like, here's the, here's the hypothesis, here's the kids that we're trying to serve, and here's how we're going to take and implement that strategy. Because I think that's what I'm hearing you ask me for.
Wh- whenever you get to the point where you're going to change programming and you require the board to take some action, that's what I'm most interested in. I, I trust, based on the report that you've provided, that you have a handle on a lot of that continuous improvement exercise that has to take place. Um, and, and, you know, I, just from this board member's position, I'll just look at the numbers coming out to judge whether or not that continuous improvement effort is delivering.
That's fair.
So I'm not asking for an additional layer of analysis, only to say, what is it? You know, a- as you mature this analysis, what is it that you need the board to do? I think it's right to say, we've looked at some of the scenarios around the redistricting and the progression and evolution towards a dual language program, that's two-way dual language. We have a location and a concentration of both poverty and, uh, Spanish-speaking students in Richmond in some of those scenarios. And so one, and we have the, the colocation of the dual language program in that location, which for a lot of logistics reasons makes sense. I think one of the immediate asks, um, that it would be prudent for the board to, to press on would be, what is the plan for Richmond if the concentration in the colocation of both English language learners and poverty is really high? Disproportionately high, as it's been pointed out, uh, by some of the public speakers. So I think, I think those are the kinds of actions, um, given all the activity that's underway that the board probably needs to see.
Yeah, so one of the things we kind of talked about, we of course are thinking about and processing and putting those things in play. Like, we're, we are thinking about what does that look like and how does that, that play out? And so in part of our planning meeting today, we talked about, kind of at the top of our learning and teaching meeting, to really talk about, what is, what are we doing specifically as it relates to boundaries to support? And at some, like, some points in times, we can talk specifically about what we're doing for Richmond. We can also talk specifically, what are we doing for teachers who are changing grade levels, and what does that look like? Or we've been working on, what are the social emotional supports that people need, that kids and families are going to need, and how do we build those in? And so that we could kind of always be talking about that, um, because I want to make sure that you know that the work that we're doing is very intentional and purposeful.
I'll just add something real briefly there, because I was going to say that as well, uh, Dr. Igo. Um, part of the discussions that we've had internally have been just identification of root cause. And I think that's why slide fourteen is really helpful, because we're seeing a couple of different root calls and causes for some of our subgroups and other inferences that we can draw from this research will also help us to help students that may fall into poverty, for example, but may not be a part of any of these other subgroups. And so part of what we wanted to do was have a framework in place that we could implement once the, the allocation of students is determined with the redistricting, and then we're ready to act as opposed to react.
Just one quick question, so the eleven percent mobility rate for our Hispanic students, is there a way to?
For our multilingual students.
Multilingual, okay. Um, is there a way to peel that apart in terms of what group within that has left the district versus just moved to another school? Because if you think to our longer term vision, we are, as we've talked about the systems and structures in place, it really shouldn't matter as much if they move from one elementary to another.
One hundred percent.
You know what, I don't know the answer to that, but let me look and see. If I can figure that out, I will absolutely give that data to you. If I can't, I will certainly let you know.
Okay, because I think that, that would be important.
Yeah, I, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, one, one thing that we did in, in my previous, uh, in a previous life of mine was we, um, looked at the K twelve and who stayed with us and what was their, what were the results?
We definitely do, we definitely pulled that, we definitely have been tracking that. And, um, we talk about how are the, and then how are students doing after, like, they have to be with us for so many years for us to say, is the program working or not working, right? Like, we, we've taken kids out that I've been here for three or more years to evaluate the impact of the program.
Continue on.
Do we even know where we are? I, I messed you up, I apologize.
No, it was a robust conversation, so we are on twenty-one. This one, yes. Okay, so when thinking about our programming for multilingual learners, so in general, we need to think about, like, really tailoring our instructional approach based on the characteristics of those students that need services. So we think about our multilingual learners, factors to consider such as age, you know, are they a primary student? Are they coming to us at the secondary level? What's been their prior education? Have they been in school? Have they not been in school? Where have they been in school? And what is their native language proficiency? So certainly understand what is the skills that that, that student has in their own native language that they're bringing. Which means that programming for students who are newcomers needs to have, they need different types of supports than students who have been receiving services for many years. So for this component here, we're really going to be talking about programming for our multilingual learners who are not enrolled in the dual language program. Whether that's one way or two way, we're really thinking about those students that are sitting outside of that programming. Um, so the two main categories in this lever are integration of best practices for instructing multilingual learners in general education settings. And I think part of where we were having this conversation about, like, instructional approaches that support English language learners. Yes, they are intentional and very specific to support multilingual learners. What I will say is those are must-dos. If those students are to be successful, if they are to develop academic content proficiency and English proficiencies, those are must-dos. In doing so, they are benefiting other students. So those same practices that are a must-do for that group of students benefits all of those other groups of students we are talking about. So like, part of what we were talking about is the complexity, right, of all of, all the strategies and approaches? And where are those high lever strategies that we can layer in? If we put our effort and intentionality in doing the must-dos to support our multilingual learners, we're doing right by them instructionally and benefiting all of the other students that we've been talking about. Um, sorry, that was my soapbox. Um, so when we think about that, to the greatest extent possible, are we providing those services and supports in the student's native language? So even if they're not in the dual language program, are we helping kids to have access to content instruction in their native language? So thinking about our students from the Ukraine and their accessing translation devices. Are we helping them to read, understand science in Ukrainian? And helping them to transfer that to the instruction that's happening in their English cla- in their English classrooms? How are you helping them to make those connections by taking what they know or what they can cognitively process in their own native language and connect it to English? Um, so the reason we do that is that the research has shown that the more children develop that home and native language academically and cognitively at an age-appropriate level, the more successful they're going to be in those academic achievement in the long term. So the more we can leverage, develop, support native language skills, whether they're in their dual language program, outside of our dual language program, we're helping the kids to develop their cognitive, their cognitive understanding as well as academic understanding that serves them in the long term. So when it's not feasible or appropriate to provide that instruction in the native or home language, we don't have a class that I can provide in Ukrainian, right? It's essential that multilingual learners are integrated into those general education, education classrooms with support. So they must be in those classrooms with specific support from educators that can give that support to them to develop based on their needs as a multilingual learner. And that consistency and coherence in the programming is essential. The research will tell you that that is one of the key factors, is that you have to have consistency in the programming that you're offering to the students. So building to building, level to level. Um, as such, we are recommending that we have consistency with how instructions deliver to students so that multilingual learners have that support in those general education classroom settings across level. So currently, we provide services through a co-teaching model at the elementary school. Here's where I'm going to be specific. So when we think about it, I have a Bellgram. I have one teacher that is servicing twenty-plus multilingual learners in that building, kindergarten through fifth grade, cross contents, cross grade levels, cross classrooms. That's a challenge, and for her to get into the P L C and be able to active support and work alongside those teachers across six grade levels is challenging. And even in the buildings where I have two teachers, so a month hall, I have two teachers. But they, the diversity that they have in terms of the number of newcomers, I think Dr. Gordon's come over and met some of our wonderful newcomers. They need more support than some of our students who've been here. And so while I might have two teachers, they're still spread across multiple classrooms, multiple grade levels, multiple contents. Um, so one of the things that we are talking about here is really increasing those co-taught courses. Like, how do you increase those opportunities for that elementary expert in supporting multilingual learners to be working alongside those classroom teachers within those grade level PLCs to talk about content instruction and good instruction for multilingual learners? That's where it gets specific. That's where it's, what are the students that are in that building? What is their language profile? And what do they need in terms of those academic supports? And what is reasonable for a teacher to be able to support cross-grade levels, cross languages, cross contexts? Um, at the middle school level, we currently are only offering the co-taught English language arts class. So the students have that opportunity in sixth and seventh grade to have that co-taught language arts class. So they're leveraging that, the great experience of that E L A teacher, um, and that teacher that understands strategies for multilingual learners. We don't have that across all of our content areas. We don't have that for math, we don't have that for science. What does that look like for able to have that access to the content? And that strong English language instruction so that learning can take place in both of those domains? Um, and then the same thing at the high school, we don't have any formalized co-teaching opportunities at the high school level. So what does that need to look like across levels? So when we think about it, when we do this partnership, we're taking the content area expertise, that I know math, I know science, and partnering with them that understands English language development. And the research would tell us that learning English through a content area is the most impactful way outside of learning in your native language that we can provide for students. So I think about, where's the specific? What are the students at each of those buildings? And certainly, we at this point don't necessarily know all, we do know some. But what does that look like in providing that support within the general education classroom setting by someone who has that knowledge and background? So thinking about that, it goes to that integrating that content in English, increasing the co-taught, how do we have that consistency in programs? If this is what we're doing at the elementary, we kind of do it at the middle school level, and then we're not doing it at the high school. How do we then build that consistency in programming and supports for students all across our system? Um, and then again, creating those clear procedures and eligibility. So what, what is the process? What are those courses? How do I need to be, what do I need to have to demonstrate to be eligible for those services and supports within those courses? And how are we making those decisions? And that's part of where it goes back to that systems and structures about how we have to be very clear, um, about those supports that we're offering for students and how they would be delivered to students based on the, the criteria that we establish.
Dr. Rush, can I jump in for just one second with a, just a quick question regarding, um, something you just mentioned made it, made me think a little bit more about maybe some of the parents or families that deny the resources. You've mentioned a very small proportion of those families do that. Do you think something like this is going to be helpful in encouraging them to be utilizing these processes and why they would help move the needle for their students?
I think so, definitely the secondary level, right? When we think about what students have in terms of an opportunity, let's talk specifically high school. So they can take a, a class that's an ESL one, two, three and four. The only students that are in that class are multilingual learners. We're not providing that support in that English nine, that English ten, and that English eleven. Everyone has to take those classes for graduation requirements. So if we shift to something like that where we're doing a co-taught, I have to be in English nine, I have to be in English ten. Here I now have the benefit of being in that classroom with a content area teacher, my grade level native English speaking peers, and a teacher who understands English language development. I think that part of it, you know, I'm not going to be isolated, said, you know, isolated in some way with a group of kids. I have access to my grade level peers, my grade level content teacher with the support I need. Does that make sense?
And I, I was just thinking about slide fourteen, we were talking about parent and family engagement and involvement, and how we can, you know, elevate that as far as understanding of what we're offering and why it would be beneficial for their, their student to take part.
May I move on to the next slide? Okay. Am I helping to make it more clear? I want to make sure that, okay.
That's good.
Good, okay.
It's really good.
All right, so, um, so when it comes to then specifically for our dual language program. So we're shifting away from the students outside of that to really focusing on dual language. Coher- coherence and consistency matters for those students as well. Um, we know that, again, we're going to repeat this, instruction in the native language as well as programs that are designed for the long term are most impactful for students who are multilingual learners. So we need to develop a plan to transition from that one-way dual language program to a two-way dual language program. By doing so, we are capitalizing on the strengths of the native language instruction. We know native language instruction is, is the best way that we can go for and support our students. But then we are also integrating them, just as we talked about before, with native English speaking peers. It's a general education classroom setting with they're interacting with, and it's then, um, And it's then, um, being able to provide that intentional connection cross languages for students. So to do so, what does require a transition? It requires intentional planning and collaboration amongst K-12 educators and community members to build a program that's not only aligned to the evidence-based practices, but is reflective of the families and the students that we serve. Um, and as we do this work, we need to continue to support and improve the programming for the students currently enrolled in the one-way dual language program. So as we transition to the two-way and start that planning process and get that into place, we still have students that will be rolling their way up through the one-way dual language program. And we need to continue to, to support them with that consistency of structure, that long-term approach that we've seen is within the evidence-based practices. Um, so within that, we're talking about having a, a two-way dual language program. We are developing an implementation, implementation plan. And that does, again, involve the collaboration amongst all of the stakeholders we're talking about to be able to be clear on the work, the program vision, mission, goals, what is the curriculum online, what's our language and content allocation? How do we want to set this up from the very beginning based on evidence-based practices to have the most successful program in place for our students? Um, and then thinking about that over the long term, right? Not just thinking about elementary, not just thinking about middle school, but how do we build that program pre-K-12 for our students? And then how do we know that this program is working alongside of having that Spanish language assessment and those clear processes for program placement? How do we know, um, that students would be a good fit for the program and how are we measuring and tracking progress over time? So, um, here you can see a timeline with some key action steps as it relates to improving programming for multilingual learners, including the dual language program. And so as previously mentioned, we're really focused on creating that consistency and coherence of programming across the levels for students. But to do so requires that intentional planning and supporting students not only through the transition through that dual language plan, but as they continue to roll their way up. So when we look at that, you know, we have to have all the planning in place before we can implement a two-way dual language program with that twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, start for a group of kindergarten students.
I, I have a question about the timeline. So looking at, um, uh, the first, the first row, procedures and programs, right? And looking at twenty-four, twenty-five, and you say implement plan for co-taught courses. What does it mean to implement a plan? Are we starting then with more co-taught courses?
So I think that's where we go back to Mr. Lackner's question of, right? That requires an investment, that requires a resource, and there's a budget that comes along with it. So what is our plan? Is the plan through the conversation that we start with adding in a, I'm just going to say, for example, where the places where I have one EL teacher, I, I get a, there's a second one so that we can have a K-two and a three-five. And that's something that we think about over the long term of rolling up. Is it this particular content area, we want to make sure that we have English Language Arts that's supported and math? And in the future, we'll look to adding science and social studies. I think that's part of what we have to map out is where is the priority? What is the level of support and how can we then build that over time?
We, we have, uh, there is a timeline for the board to make those resources available. So if, if I'm hearing what I'm hearing, I think, or understanding what I'm hearing, we need to know that very soon so you can host and hire because we're, we're coming into spring when people will be looking for next year. If you know that this is something you want to, now I'm trying to think through what and I'm getting tired as I think all of us are. If we, we need to do that, I don't want us to wait another year if we're ready to implement more.
Yeah, so just to be clear, like as we talk about like our staffing, right? We talk about staffing and, um, that's something we're going to do every year. And then we start with, I'm going to do elementary because that's a, it's an easy place for us to start is to say like, we know that we probably need, if we really want teachers to do the work that we're asking them to do, we need probably three in every building. But we need to then wake that up across time, right? And so we started to lay that out, but when we talk about our staffing, we'll be saying, here's where we're adding staffing. Here's where we're able to do it by, you know, there's been a reduction here or move here, right? Versus, but knowing that at the end of the day, we probably need two to three in every building. If we really want people to get in and understand what's in the curriculum at K-one, what's in the curriculum at two, three? What's in the curriculum at four or five?
So.
And responding.
So with that, um, when you come back and present that to the board, I think it would be helpful to not only be able to map out what your recommendation is that you know the budget can support and we will speak to that. But then in addition to that, then what, what is the, I don't know how long it will take. I don't, first of all, I don't know what the ask is. And I don't know, does that take five years or 10 years, for example? I think it would be important to map that out to the board so that we can see, you know, how, how does it fit in the overall strategy? How long is it going to take to get there? And then, you know, collectively, is everyone comfortable with that length of time? You know, it just starts the discussion, but that kind of needs to, that's how I would lay it out.
Absolutely, and we're definite, definitely working towards that. I guess our goal tonight was to say, here's what we think we need.
Yeah.
And we are looking for, yeah, you, we agree that you, like, that's something we want you to do. Because that's, you know, we agree that we need more staff. So we're, we want you to, to invest in that.
Yeah, so I ju, I would just say, I, I about had a heart attack, about three additional head count, right? And, and we're, we're making other, other changes here. A- again, I think it's, that's why it's also important focusing on the building level uh, on this again, just so that we're aware and that we know that we're providing the right services in the right spots. Because the more, more we move, more we move the, the challenges around, right? The, the more staff than we have to, to staff up in all those other buildings and do it. So, um, I, I just echo Ms. Ferris', uh, point about the sooner rather than later. And then it has to be what the budget can support. Um, I, I, one thing that was said at the, the last meeting is we, we talked about a zero revenue increase budget for, for next year. It, it has to be what the, the budget can support.
You also need to make sure facility-wise, um, your perfect world, we need three staff members. Or how are we doing that? Is that co-taught? So it's not an, an additional classroom space? Just bear that in mind. I'm sure you're keeping that in mind, but that kind of information would help me when we're talking about these.
Yeah, and, and I just want to be clear. What we're trying to say here is our students need to be in the Gen Ed classroom.
Yeah.
Right? And if we want to do it well and we want to do it right, we need to pair that with an EL specialist. But we can't ask an EL specialist to go EC kindergarten through fifth grade. Like, that's not a reasonable expectation. And so we, we will need additional staff to make that work. I, I just want to be clear about that. And we can build that out many different ways, but we just need you all to know that we are, we'll come back with exactly what that looks like, but we need to know that you're in for, we're going to need additional staff to make that work.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'll, I'll just speak, I, I think the board is open to what your recommendations are in connected to with this recommendation and this investment. This is what we anticipate the result will be and how long it's going to take.
Agreed. And we just kind of need to see a little bit like, how are the kids going to fall? Because what we're going to do is we're going to highlight and we're going to prioritize where we put those supports first, right? And we might pick a few schools at elementary that we know we need to do that in. And I'm going to be very clear that we, we need to do something at high school. We must do something at high school, but we need to have a better understanding of what classes we have and how we compare those people up and where we land specifically. So yes, absolutely.
Specifically also to the amount of one staff member being able to manage EC to five, just elementary speaking, that just is not possible because they can't be in every single classroom. When, you know, if it's ELA support, each class at this, you know, what if it's happening in the same time at different grade levels? You can't be a clone. So that would be as far as I know. Yeah, and I think that would be really helpful for me too in making that decision. Because to Mr. Lackner's point, we know we have this deficit and we've known for a while for this particular population. And, and I'm hearing how you're planning to address that specifically. And I think back to Mr. Lackner's request, this is going to be one of those asks, which I think is really important. So I look forward to all that information. Thank you.
So when we think about then the final, um, lever here is really working through, um, increasing our family engagement. Um, the research has shown that family engagement, when it is intentional and sustained, it positively impacts grades, test scores, passing rates in enrollment in higher level programs, high school graduation and college attendance. Um, so we also know that there are factors outside of school that we've talked about that impact student learning, such as access to healthcare, food and housing insecurity. And as schools, we do not directly support that specific need, but we can connect our families to community organizations who can. Um, and so we currently partner with a variety of community organizations that support families, but we recognize the potential for greater impact. Um, especially if we can bring those services closer to our families and students and such. We want to know specifically, are there needs that we are unaware of or of greater importance to our families? And so we really want to do kind of conduct a survey or some, have some conversations with our families to better understand what that need is. Thinking about establishing monthly meetings for Hispanic families at our schools. And this would be the place, again, if the dual language program is housed at Richmond's and we have Hispanic populations at other schools, really actively engaging and designing our, our family engagement activities to meet the needs of that specific population of families, ones that are responsive and collaborative and build the partnership that is meaningful for them, um, and bringing them to the schools and working with us as partners. Um, as needed, we know that we need to continue to explore options, um, potentially with transportation to such events. And that's something that, you know, in terms of thinking about that barrier, what might be a potential barrier to accessing our schools or accessing and becoming that full partner with us? That's something I have had mentioned to us. And so thinking about how we might potentially mitigate that barrier, um, by exploring some of those options. When we think about some, again, at the bottom there, partnering with our families really begins early in a child's life. Um, and we know that those first five years of a child's development are really critical for that long-term development and their success in school. Um, and so we really want to work on how do we increase the awareness within our community, especially being very targeted, right? To certain populations about, um, our child find and our community outreach. We also talked about, um, investigating, um, an early intervention grant, which then would allow us to have resources and supports to support, um, children that are birthed age three. So really at that early stage before they're even eligible for preschool or early childhood, how do we connect with families? How do we provide those resources and supports very early on in a child's life? Um, and so one of the things that we are coming through with an ask is in order to empower our parents and build that collaborative partnership with families. Um, we really do feel that the creation of a community and family liaison position is needed. Someone who has that and owns that is their role and responsibility to navigate those resources and connect for, with our families in a way that is meaningful to the families that we've been talking about.
Is this, is this a, a central office position? Where is it, where is this, where is this role going to be housed at?
I think i- i- it really depended on, yes, it absolutely can be, but where I've seen it most effective is in the schools, the highest impact schools. So you would think about a, a Richmond, that's where this individual would be housed. That's where I know is where it's happening because our families don't go to the district office. Our families go to our schools.
Yeah.
That's where you create that, that connection, that, that, that welcoming environment. But part of that welcoming environment is being able to be greeted by somebody who's speaking, uh, your language. And you see signs and cues that I'm welcomed here. That's one of the most important things we do. Dr. Ica?
No, absolutely. And I think as we put this together, we, in our heads, we're thinking that it would be probably across multiple buildings. You know, probably more time is the way, the way the, um, three hundred and twenty numbers are coming out at Richmond. But we also need that person to reach out and connect with families at, at Mon Hall or Anderson as well. So we kind of see that as a
Have we, got it. Have we started drafting a, a job description on this role? Or is this just exploratory as far as?
We will be. We, we have a lot, we have a number of districts that use this, so we'll be able to lean into that work, but then make it our own.
I mean, I, I, I think that would certainly be helpful, at least for, for myself as a board member of, what are the other districts that are utilizing this position? What does the role look like? Um, you know, and obviously from the business services side, what's, what's the range, right? Um, but what, what is, what does this position accomplish? I also appreciate actually housing them at the school. I, uh, I, I just want to share that. I think that is super important. Again, I, 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 you know, I, I think the more resources that we put in our schools, the better, the better services that we can provide.
Um, so you can see that we've outlined, um, a timeline with some key action steps as it relates to involving our Hispanic multilingual families um, in order to build those partnerships. And as you said, the goal is to make the schools the center and the hub. Like, that's, that's our connection point with our families is at the building level. So very much so that that is where those activities need to be generated from, from the specific families and students who are in those buildings. So we can connect in a way that is meaningful to them. And that does look different building to building. Um, let's see. Okay, so now that we've outlined, oh, I'll stop there. Are we ready to continue on for the success indicators? Okay, sorry. Um, we've, uh, outlined those evidence-based practices. We talked about some specific action steps that we would like to take. Um, we want to talk about some of those success indicators, um, to make sure that we are on track with making sure we're making progress towards those goals. Um, and so measuring our success, those just is largely aligned to, that's very similar to the district, district strategic plan. But you'll see that we have added some things that are very specific to multilingual learners. You'll see on these indicators, um, the data from the baseline year of twenty twenty-three that we used, and then those targets that we have built for the subsequent years. Um, so it's small on this slide, so if you go to page twenty in the report, you can have a better lens of what is actually in that. Um, and you can see that we have four, um, indicators in four main areas. So looking at the English Language Arts proficiency, so for students in grades K through two, we're looking at the I-ready data. For students in grades three, five, eight, and eleven, we're going to be looking at their performance on those state assessments. Math proficiency is going to be measured in the same way. K-two with the I-ready and then state performance for grades three, five, eight, and eleven. Um, since we talked about very specifically some of our action items related to creating a cultural dignity and supportive learning environments, that indicator for a sense of belonging as reported by our Hispanic students, especially as a secondary level that we talked about, will help us to better understand the impact of our work. And so really wanting to track that and look at that. And finally, we want to ma, monitor chronic absenteeism. Um, and we want to do this, we're doing this as part of, part of our strategic plan, but really thinking about our kindergarten students. Because this is the place where we're building that routine for that regular school attendance. It starts in kindergarten and that's essential for their future success, which is why we want to monitor that particular grade level. If we turn to page twenty-one of the report, you'll see that we set it up very similarly, um, for our multilingual learners. Um, but with what's different here is there's two indicators that are specific to multilingual learners. That one, first one being progress to proficiency. So when students take that access test for ELS for the first time in kindergarten, the state establishes an annual growth target for that student based on the growth that they need to make each year to get to that proficiency level. Um, and so we want to have, um, an indicator looking at our kids on track. Are they meeting their targets each year to meeting that English language proficiency? So you'll see that we have targets for second, third, fourth, and fifth. Those third, fourth, and fifth grade years are really those critical years at the end of their proficiency timeline. And then we've also set that up for grades, grades, grade bands of six and eight and nine and twelve. And then the other indicator that we have in there, um, is looking at our LTALs for our long-term ELS. And these are students who've been in the EL program for more than seven years. Um, and we really want to have the goal of decreasing the number of students who are in this category. Questions about the success indicators?
I have a couple of comments on success indicators. The, um, the co-mingling of all of the students that are reflected on page twenty-two in this report, in these success indicators will mask a lot of the challenge and a lot of the progress that we want to make. When I think about just the, um, Hispanic and Spanish language students, uh, we talked earlier about the nine percent versus the five percent in the distinctions there. When we look at these success indicators, um, I think the board might want to consider saying that for those nine percent that are Hispanic students who are English language proficient, the expectation would be their success indicators match the population as a whole. And for the five percent, we have a special challenge because we have language acquisition. Co-mingling those two groups, I think, masks, uh, the opportunity for really focused intervention. And so I'd strongly encourage us to parse this group in three different ways that are not reflected in these slides. One is to take the fact that we have all of these, all of these languages. And there are, I don't know the count on it, but it's a big count. There's a lot of forty-six languages or some, some large number. It's really difficult to, to measure the programmatic impact associated with, uh, you know, less than one percent of you know, less than one percent of the students uh speaking one language, but we do have this Spanish-speaking concentration. And we should be looking at that separately. And so two things, I think the, the earlier conversation about uh Hispanic Latino population is one issue. English language learners who happen to speak Spanish is a second issue, and the third issue might be all uh multilingual learners combined, but that's a separate issue. And so today, the way you have it set up, they're all co-mingled. And so I would, um, if this was brought to me as a board member, I would reject um these success indicators and and push to have that broader or that more specific measure, particularly that breakout of the nine percent versus the five percent.
I, I would totally agree. I was concerned that um the uh success indicators on page twenty, those are low benchmarks. And so I think we need to
So there, I think we do have some of what you're, not all of what you're asking for. So we do have two stick groups. So the student, the his, where it says Hispanic students, these are Hispanic students who do not qualify for EL services. So this is the nine percent, if you will, of students, right? And where those students are, where they currently are and where we want to go. So the multi, just multilingual is everybody. So I think what I heard you say is take this group and separate out Spanish from all other languages. Is that what you're asking?
That, that is what I'm asking because we have this um in inherent in the conversation, there's a an awful lot of investment by the district, both in Richmond and in the progression towards a dual language program, that's two-way dual language. That's two-way dual language associated with Spanish.
Yeah.
And so we ought to be looking at it that way.
Okay. So that's really, it's really about pulling this apart here now. Yeah, okay, we can definitely do that.
So, so can we go back then to um the chart on twenty? Because these are low benchmarks. And I wonder, I was wondering how you came up with them because I think I would, I would agree with Mr. Lackner. If language is not the issue, then they should be reflective of what we expect all of students to hit.
Um, I, so the way we did it is we started with our current baseline. Um, and then built, we, I think we said five percent, like we looked at overtime, how much time? What, what we, what is a reasonable expectation for us to grow o- over time? So that is kind of where we started. I agree. The goal is that there is no difference, right? Or that we are not able to predict um how well someone will do based upon upon their race or whatever. That is our end goal, but we were also trying to, we could put that as the end goal, but we were trying to benchmark it for five years and make goals that were manageable and reachable. But if you would prefer, we could do it the other way.
I just wanted to clarify what you were asking because I, I think it was what I was considering is uh you wanted to disaggregate the nine percent from the five percent and, and compare them, and you want to also disaggregate that five percent from the nine percent. We conversely, and compare them to the rest of the district as well. Because that's where I think the problem lies is in, in, so I think we
Well, right, I, I look at that nine percent when we had this conversation earlier about um the, the fact that that nine percent um do not qualify for, for
Right.
Language learning services. That tells me that that nine percent um ought to perform at the, at the population norm.
Right.
And so, yeah, I wanted to disaggregate that. And then for the five percent, closing, closing the gap for folks who are English language learner.
And that's what I mean. When I say that's where the problem lies, that's, that's the gap that I want to close. So I, I agree a hundred percent that that, that that nine percent group should be it, it kind of pulled out and, and we need to look at them to make sure that they are tracking the way we expect they should. But I think we still need to focus closely on that five percent and bring that five percent where possible to, to where the nine percent is. And a lot of that's going to be language acquisition.
And I, if, if I heard rightly, the um today, what's on twenty-eight is the nine percent and what's on twenty-nine is the five percent plus all of the other English language learners of
Yeah.
No, this one here, of, of all of the other English language learners who happen to speak from Gujarati to Cantonese.
We're going to do with that is pull out Spanish only in the multilingual, because it is a very different population. So we, we've got that. We've got that.
And, and we can look to, I guess I, I the things that I've learned, having, you know, put this together from, you know, that we've got for all kids. Right? If when we set that, what we want ambitious goals, absolutely, but if it's so ambitious, like there becomes a point where we're never good, like it takes people's ability to feel like I can actually reach that goal. So we were trying to make the, the stepstones here manageable and do it like ambitious, but also reachable. Um, but if you would well, we don't actually have goals all the way out to twenty twenty-nine. We only have them out to twenty twenty-five, but we can like at least acknowledge what that gap would be, right? Right now, we've got a pretty large gap. Um. Is that what you're out? I, I hear the, the need to have it match the whole population, but I also want to be reasonable.
Well, well, a couple of different things. I mean, as, as we consider the success indicators, the absence of uh the population as a whole in the table creates um the potential for us to be under ambitious. So if, if we're looking at a population that says it, it's not yet performing at the population norm in this subgroup, then I understand the need to, to drive incremental performance change over time. At the same time, the reference back to what should be a positively moving broader population norm is also important. And so I think it's a, there's a broader discussion about the pace at which we think helping this subgroup perform better can be achieved. That's a separate conversation from actually tracking progress of this subgroup over time. And so you know, looking at these as potential success indicators, I just expect that a reference back to that population norm as a whole excluding this subgroup is absolutely important as uh a comparison, so that we know the distance that needs to be traveled. But we also recognize that even up to twenty twenty-five, we have progressively ambitious goals for the population as a whole. So I think, I think we need both of those things reflected here.
No, that, that's fair.
All right. Wha- what else?
I don't know. I believe that is the end of our report. If there are any other questions, we are happy to answer them.
Thank you both very much.
Great job. Thank you both. Board, nice, nicely done as well. Good conversation, good discussion. And generally, this is a learning teaching committee conversation, which looks different than a board meeting conversation. Uh, but because we had to cancel or postpone the, the learning teaching meeting in December, so I wanted to give context. This is maybe very normal learning teaching committee meeting that we just had. Real good back and forth, real good conversations. Uh, very different than the traditional board meeting. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood who, who, if you're watching just board meetings, this would be a little bit of an outlier on that, but a very typical learning teaching or any type of committee meeting that we have in the past year and a half. Great job, both of you. Thank you.
So now moving on to uh section four, item C on the agenda is boundaries. Um, I think what uh really was the intent behind this item on the agenda was just to give uh board members another opportunity to ask additional questions that might have come to light. Um, additional comments and so forth. I think you
Oh, I, I do. Um, you know, I, I've been reflecting on, you know, since the last business services meeting on the, the boundary question. And thinking a little bit more about some of the survey feedback that we got, especially around secondary, uh, you know, the high school boundaries. Um, I know that we are going to look at um the, the feeder from middle school to high school. Um, but I, I asked, you know, Dr. Gordon to, you know, what, what's the number of students impacted on that? And I think you said, what, three to seven hundred?
Yeah, it would be super big time back of the envelope.
Right.
Look at that.
Um, but one of the things that I've, I've been reflecting, especially over the new year on, on the, uh, the boundaries discussion, especially with the input from the community as well, is I feel like we've had a very good progression through this process. Um, you know, utilizing RSP, getting the options. Again, we I, I think many community members have heard kind of how this went in the past and some of the challenges that were there. And we've gotten certainly very positive feedback from the community on this. The one thing as, you know, we go into that presentation this week from RSP that I, I just kind of want to, you know, get, get the board kind of prepped for a little bit is when they look, when the community sees a, a, a significant change, like the high school one, after they've already given us the feedback on where they're at with high school boundaries. And I think a, a lot of us have that. I, I don't want us to be surprised at, at an outcry on that, that piece of it, right? And I think we've, we've progressed pretty well down this path. Um, th- that's the one concern that I, I really have about this. Uh, and, and I know I, I had a lot of people in, in my neighborhood in particular, which would be a, a significant change for my neighborhood. Reach out to me specifically, uh, because again, we are the, on the heat map there, pretty, pretty big student feeder. Uh, it would be a, a significant change for us. So I did have a, a lot of people reaching out. And that's, that's one thing that, again, I, I don't want us to throw away all the good work that we've done, um, on progressing this to then open it back up to a much larger and, you know, cre- create it up or in the community. So um, that, that was kind of my feedback that I, one of the things that I wanted to add, is fair agree, go, go ahead. I know you
Yeah, the, the only comment I would make to that, I think it's very important for uh Thursday's um discussion or, or presentation is there's going to be multiple options that are presented. And not all of those options will be determined by the consensus of the board to move forward. So I think I think uh although I appreciate, I'm sure it will be challenging, um, if, if we and even the community looks at it with that lens, I think that that could be helpful. We also have another um uh stakeholder group within our community that has asked at least that the analysis be done to take a look at what that would mean and implications. So I know I had raised that. I think Mrs. McCabe had raised it as well. That was my intention behind it. I think we owe um to look at it.
A hundred percent. And, and I, I, I know that you're both coming at it with the best of intentions. It's, I just wanted to share that, those thoughts that I had over the, the, the process. I, I know and, and again, uh, that's where too, right? I also appreciate those stakeholders who have asked for it. So I do think it's, it's there. But again, I wanted to throw that out there to make sure that, you know, again, that was something that I had heard and make sure that the board kind of had, had those thoughts. Cause I, I know it's a, a big change and I, I, again, you know, I, I don't want to I don't want to toot our own horn, but I, I do appreciate Paul and the team and the board for this, this journey on it. Normally, you know, I like, I've heard these are, you know, more of a nightmare than the, the process is. So again, that, that was my, the intent of it, so.
I, I think we can expect that we're going to have pushback on every piece that comes out. Um, and I think um it's part of our job and duty to be sure we've looked at everything. Because I think that was one of the issues that happened before was you didn't look at this, you didn't look at this. And once we do look at it and we have a conversation, um, just because we ask, and I think we've said this all along, doesn't mean that's where we're going to land. So I think to um what Mrs. Fairgreave said as well, I think it's important that we have that information. It's our job to listen, our job to, you know, try to calm the waters when possible, but that's, we're, we're going to have angry people. It's just going to happen. And um I think that what would be worse if we, we, we tried to get away from that anger by not looking at all the data.
A hundred percent. I, and again, I, I, I said this at business services, right? We went into this exercise saying we want to rip the Band-Aid off once, right? We asked administration, we charged them with looking at all three levels. So and if, if that's what helps the, the board get to our due diligence on it, absolutely. So.
I think one of the things that I've been making sure I remind myself is all of the comments that we've heard, that I, I have heard during my last two and a half years as a board member about overcrowding. We aren't going to make everybody happy. We do have to address these very serious issues. And it's not going to be fun, no matter what we do. We're going to make somebody uncomfortable. And we need to look at all the scenarios. We have to leave no stone unturned. So we have the opportunity to see all of the information. And people just really need to remember that I believe all of us at the table are doing everything we can to, to consider everything because this is a big decision. And I, I don't think any one of us is not putting everything into it. We just need to make sure that we're reminding the public that things do have to change. And I don't know what it's going to be, but I, it's important because we have to ease the pressures on these schools and, and balance things out. We're, we're not going to have a magical um, you know, lottery win and get a windfall of cash in our district and we could just build whatever schools we want. I mean, that's not reality. Um, as much as I'd love that scenario. Um, so I'm not looking forward to whatever decision we make. What I'm looking forward to is for this conversation to, to our decision to be made so that we can make positives changes in the future for these kiddos.
I was going to say, Paul, Justin, are, are we not in the magical lottery thing? Is it?
If not, we should.
Forgot to submit the ticket for that. I'm going to blame it on him. So one of the things that does continue to evolve, um very recently, we were just notified that there is a potential new development uh that will be going in behind Meyer. I think that's the best way of between thirty-eight and Bircher. Um, so it's, it has a lot of work to do to go through the city. It's not been finalized. It is currently zoned for commercial. Um, but in our conversations with uh Mr. Addaway, myself and the city, um, this is a similar developer. It is the same developer, not similar, the same developer that is putting in the, the new housing uh development over by Norton Creek, uh, the Springs. Um, so we have taken that into consideration. We brought it to RSP. Uh, that has been implemented because we, we do feel from the city's perspective that this is a strong likelihood that this will move forward. Um, as they have a relationship with this developer, they've worked through different issues, recognizing it isn't, i- it is not signed off by the city. It's not zoned properly yet. But we, in doing to Mr. Len's point and others, we don't want to be doing this again, starting February thirteenth. Uh, with a new, uh, you know, because it's roughly three hundred and sixty, but it's a very different type of, of development, more apartments, some town homes, some even rental homes within it. So it's a different type of community, but it is one that we, we have uh brought to the forefront of RSP. So I just wanted to put that out there. So you will see some things that are different. And it is a new development that we do believe will be coming to the D three O three boundaries.
So um I did talk to Mrs. Fairgreave and the superintendent. We used to have a representative on the Housing Commission for St. Charles. And I don't think we have anyone currently. It may be something that we want to consider. As we go down the pike.
I'm happy to volunteer for that if that's something that you need a board representative from.
Thank you.
Anything else?
What, it just, it has just dawned on me that the next board meeting, regular board meeting is when we're going to vote. So we have, so we have, as a, yeah, as a team, we have a lot of work yet to do. Um, and it's going to get more intense as we go along.
Yes, you have the eleventh, the sixteenth, the twenty-ninth and, and February twelfth, um, as we walk through this process. But the timeline is condensing now. We, we don't have a lot of that same time to go back out and do the, the different pieces. Much of this is going to be coming to the board um, for some really hard conversations around the table um in the coming weeks. So it's a good point.
But we do have many uh committee meetings coming. This will be discussed in ample time for discussion and questions, all those things, so that everyone's comfortable.
Yeah, I feel like we, we are on a good timeline for this to occur on February twelfth.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Um, okay, so with that, we will move to Um, okay. So with that, we will move to, um, section five on the agenda, which is consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items five A through five O?
Miss, Mr. G, uh, can we, there were some of the consent agenda items, the minutes from some of them were not attached in board docs. Um, I believe it was A, C, uh, E and F. Uh, we got the business services one just before the meeting.
Yeah, I thought they were.
Mr. Lent, what would you like to do?
Um, well, uh, so under executive content, I'm logged in. I'm only seeing him for a couple of them in here. I think, I think Okay.
So we're good?
I, I think we're good then.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
I will help you.
So can, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kucher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz. Uh, is there any, uh, discussion at this time? Okay, Ms. Marsan, would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Kucher.
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreave?
Yes, motion passes seven to zero. Um, moving to section six on the agenda, which is for action. Uh, item A is the purchase of property. Can I have a motion to approve the facility purchase agreement as presented and authorize administration to sign any necessary documents related to the purchase?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lackner for the first and, uh, Mr. Lentz for the second. Is there any discussion at this time?
I, I just want to say, uh, Paul and the team, thank you for following up on this. I know Mr. Lackner and I brought this to business services. I think this is a, a very good use of, uh, uh, our funding, our limited funding, um, to help solve some facility needs here. So I'm, I'm very excited to see this come forward.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Lentz. Anything else?
For the public, uh, knowledge, because I don't think they're necessarily connecting the meeting. Could we just have a quick reminder that this is for the facility?
I would like when it
Clarify that so everybody knows.
Sure, this is for the, the purchase of a, of a condominium space, an industrial condominium space that includes both warehouse and office and will be used both for the storage of, um, curriculum materials and to house offices for L and T.
Will, will also save us, uh, some build out at Lincoln, which again, I think is a very important thing for us. We'll, we'll, we'll be enjoying some savings from that. And something that I've asked a number of times for of not tearing open the walls at Lincoln, the second floor. So.
And the, the other thing is it's going to alleviate a lot of our storage issues and, and in fact consolidate pretty much all of our storage. So we don't need to worry about it.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Marsan, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kucher?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreave?
Yes. Uh, motion passes seven to zero. Uh, item B, Haynes Early Childhood Construction. Can I have a motion to award the construction contracts for the renovation of the Haynes Center to the recommended vendors, which the board recognizes as the lowest responsible bidder for the respective contracts and further assign the contracts to the board's construction manager, Pepper Construction?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz and Mr. Kucher for the second. Is there any discussion at this time? Okay, Ms. Marsan, would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kucher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Abstain.
Mrs. Fairgreave?
Uh, yes. Uh, motion passes with six yes and one abstain. Uh, item six C is the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed twenty-five million dollars general obligation, limited tax school bonds, series two zero two four of the district for the purpose of increasing working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed twenty-five million general obligation, limited tax school bonds, series twenty twenty-four of the district for the purpose of increasing working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the proposed sale of said bonds to the purchaser thereof?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, um, Mr. Lackner for the second. Any discussion? Ms. Marsan, please take the roll call vote.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Mr. McNally?
No.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kucher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairgreave?
Abstain. Uh, motion passes, uh, with five yes, one abstain and one no. Um, moving to section seven, which is for information. There are four items for information in the packets, uh, standing items, our district three zero three financial report, Mid Valley Financial Report, FOIA or Freedom of Information Act request and district enrollment. Uh, does anyone have any new business that they would like to raise at this time? Okay, uh, moving then to section nine on the agenda, citizen comments. Uh, there are no citizen comments at this time, so we will now move to, uh, adjourning of the meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four school board meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Lentz and Mr. McNally for the second. Ms. Marsan, would you please take the roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Kucher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackner?
Yes.
Mr. Lentz?
Yes.
Mrs. McCabe?
Yes.
Mrs. Fairreath?
Uh, yes, motion passes, uh, seven to zero and our meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-six P M.